Thank you Frank. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Tuesday, January twenty eighth, two thousand and fourteen's Foxborough. We're at the Hoxell High School Media for the Selectment Meeting. And tonight's agenda would be six P. M. Meeting opens. Six fifteen, we're going to be doing the first interview for Town Manager, John P. Hathaway. At seven fifteen approximately, we'll be doing a Board of Selectment Organization. At seven thirty, we'll be doing our second interview with William G. Keegan, Jr. And eight thirty, Board of Selectment organizing again. And then at eight forty-five, Frederick E. Turkington, Jr., the last interview for Town Manager. And this was all put together by Ms. Brew with the Board's help. And she's done a lot of work on this, so I'm gonna hand it right over to her.
Thanks, Mark. Everyone has in front of them a packet with the Town Manager interview questions. And what we'll do is we'll start off by explaining the interview rules to the candidates. And, oh, I'm sorry. We need to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you.
John?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for reminding. Okay, Lorraine, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. So, the interview for each candidate will last approximately sixty minutes. There will be twelve questions in total. We'll give them the opportunity to provide us with a closing statement. And then after the interviews are completed, we'll discuss the next steps to be taken to gather additional information for our final decision. So, for example, if we want to send a delegation to each of the towns to meet with certain key people, you know, to bring that information in before we make our final decision at the next meeting, we could, you know, talk about doing that at the end of the process. Or if we have some time now, we could talk about that. Hopefully, those visits would be able to be done within a short timeframe. Ideally, if we could come back and deliberate and announce a decision by the February fourth, we could then start contract negotiations immediately following that. So, it's a really tight timeframe. I thought we would ask permission from each of the candidates as they come forward. And I explain these interview rules to them, that we'd ask permission to send that delegate as they come to us, so we'll know who we can visit. And, but for the Board, the key items to bear in mind during the interview process, we cannot ask any questions related to a person's marital status, race, family, sexual orientation, et cetera. All questions must be job-related. Questions should focus on how the person's knowledge and experience would relate to Foxborough context, not to highly specific situations in Foxborough. It's important to make the candidates comfortable. The interview is not an inquisition. This is a conversation. And to the extent possible, the Board should try to get a feeling for the personal style, management style, and experience of the candidate. All of the candidates have put considerable energy into their efforts and are all contributing to Foxborough's selection process. And that we should all consider taking notes just to record our impressions of the candidates as we go through this process. So, do you want to talk about the idea of sending a delegation to each of the towns?
Yeah, I guess the question is, once we get through the interviews, do you think there's value in, you know, sending two people to the candidates' towns to talk with department heads and other folks who might be able to give us insight into their management styles and their, you know, their, you know, the, I guess, the contributions that they've made to the town? I know other towns have done this. And I just, I think we just need to decide if that's something we want to do. Because if we do want to do it, it's, again, as Lorraine said, it is a compressed timeframe. That would have to probably be done Thursday, Friday, Monday.
Well, I know for a fact that Norfolk's not even open on Fridays, Town Hall. And I'm not sure about the other towns. Like, ours closed at twelve, I believe, right?
About thirteen, yeah.
Twelve-thirty. So, Friday would probably be a scratch.
Yeah. I mean, do you see value in that, Mark?
I tell you, I see value in it. But I don't know, with two of these gentlemen actively working for another municipality, there might be some bad feelings if we're taking a key guy from their department. They, they might not want their person to leave. I mean, I could see that being a negative, too. But, and I'm open for discussion on it.
Oh, I think, I think, well, I mean, the fact that the candidates in Foxborough is public at this point.
Right.
I don't know how they've handled their local towns and the communications that they've given to their boards of selectmen. I don't know. I guess we can ask them.
Well, I'm sure they were informed before we went public with it. I wouldn't think that would be the wise thing to do. But, I mean, it's open for discussion. Anybody else have any feelings on this?
Yeah, actually, I brought it up today because I think it's a good idea at some level. And I wasn't, to be honest with you, I wasn't thinking of a big delegate and a big formal process. I was planning on picking up the phone and calling up and saying, do you have a few minutes to, I come in and discuss it, see each person in their office and talk to them. But then I realized if five people are having the same idea, then it gets a little unwieldy.
I guess the most we can send is two.
Per.
Per, yeah.
It couldn't be the two going to each one, I don't think.
Logistically, it would have to get worked out.
Yeah.
You could also do, let's say you wanted to talk to five or six different people, you could say, Jim talks to the fire chief and the police chief. Jenny talks to X and Y. And you could do it that way and split it up that way, too.
Right. No, that's a good point.
What do you think about doing it by phone as opposed to in-person, just, you know, from a time standpoint?
From a time perspective, that would work a lot better. Because then you're actually not traveling. And it's, Jim, Bob's idea, that's a sound one.
Yeah.
If we broke it up and everyone, you know, like, Mark, you talk to all the fire chiefs or something like that.
Yeah. Yeah.
What do you think, Jenny?
Yeah, sounds fine.
So, we'd have definitely fire chief, police chief, town administrator, I mean, town finance officer.
Yep.
Who else could be there?
Town clerk.
What about a town clerk? And would it be a board member also?
Try and get the chairman.
The chairman.
Chairman would be helpful. If you want, I could reach out to the clerks. I know them, actually, the clerk in Norfolk just was elected representative. But I've already spoken to the clerk in Dedham. He's a friend of mine. So, I could reach out to all the clerks if you want me to do that.
That might be enough. That should give you good flavor for it.
Bobby handled the clerks. Yeah, I mean, I'll take the fire chiefs. I have no problem with that. I mean, the, the last candidate, Mr. Turkington, is not even employed at this point in time by none of the municipalities. So, it could be awkward. I'm saying...
I mean, you'd be calling his most recent, which would be Town of Whalen.
Right. So, I mean, I don't know if that makes it a, an awkward situation for him because the other two are employed with their communities right now.
Well, I think, I think at the end of our interview, we'll ask if it's okay with us to do this.
Yeah, I think that's a good point.
You know, they may say, I'd rather you not. So, it's entirely up to them.
I can call the finance director.
You probably should speak to the chairman of the Board for each of the municipalities.
Jim, do you want to handle the chairmans? Or do you want the chairman to handle the chairman?
Chairman of which Board? The, you know, Board of Selectmen.
The Board of Selectmen each town? Do you want me to do that?
How about we back up a little bit? I was thinking more simple.
Okay.
We can even ask him at this, if a selectman calls you up, can you schedule something that we come in for ten, fifteen minutes and come into your office and leave it up to that person to either put something together or say no? I don't want to start calling all the fire chiefs and police chiefs and have five different people going to three different places times two or three departments.
No, no, Jim, we're gonna, we're gonna phone call in lieu of an actual visit, just to, in the interest of time.
No, I understand that. But if we put the onus on the applicant to say, we would like to get some more information around the environment that you're working, do you have an objection? And if they say no, then say, well, can you set something up? Give us a half an hour and a couple of us will come in and sit with you. And it's up to him to bring in the clerk or the fire chief. I think if we're going to all these different places in a short time of a week...
I don't know. I think it'd be better if you were talking to these people without the candidate present.
Yeah. I, the only thing I say once again is, Mr. Turkington is not presently employed. So, how could he arrange a meeting with all those department heads in his office? So, I think it puts him at a disadvantage.
Well, I think it puts him in more of a disadvantage if you're going to the town where he used to work without him and coming directly to his bosses, you know?
That's why I brought it up.
But what we're really looking for is people that know them and have worked with them, all the candidates. And I think phone calls are, you can dispatch those a little bit easier.
Well, you know...
Get like five minutes before the meeting, if you wanted to go over questions before you.
Is there anything that is not okay with any one of us reaching out to any one of, anybody? Why can't we all just reach out on our own?
Well, you don't want to be reaching out to the same people.
Yeah, you just, it's probably, you know, better use of your time to split up a list and focus on, you know, a handful of key people.
Well, what are your thoughts, James? Because this was your...
Yeah, what I was gonna do, and I was, I worked around my schedule today. I've got work in and around all of these towns. I was just gonna call them up and say, I'm gonna swing by on Thursday for an hour. Do you have time? And then discuss shop with them, whatever, you know, if he wants to give me a tour of, of the office and how he works, I'd get a better sense in my mind. If it gets, if everyone wants to do the same thing, then I, then I think it gets unwieldy.
Yeah.
So, not knowing what you guys, if you even plan to do that. Before I made my decision, I had it in my mind that I wanted to do that. I didn't want to just offer or put my two cents in from an hour interview on kind of sterile questions that you don't have any dialogue with. So, I wanted to get some personal interaction. And if he wants to bring me around and show some of the projects he's working on, or the staff, or grab coffee, leave it up to that person to see if they say yes or no and find out when we get there. But I didn't expect it to be a big formal process with five people.
Mm-hmm.
But I understand if you all want to do the same thing, then we've got to, I'd probably have to back off a little bit and put it into your lapses, how you want to do it.
You would bring back your, you know, you would report back for our deliberations, what your observations were?
Sure.
So, Jim would do the candidate and the rest of us would, one would call the fire chief, one would call the police chief, Bob would call the clerk, and Mike would call the Board of Selectmen chairman? And then we'd all do a report on what we got?
Does that tie in with what you're thinking of?
I didn't go, I didn't think of going down five channels into the, into the staff, to be honest with you. I was just trying to keep it simple. I just wanted to grab coffee with the candidate and see what he's all about in, in his environment.
You can do that. And then, you know, if they want to just reach out to a couple of the key people. And it doesn't have to be super in-depth and, you know, a lot of time involved, but...
Yeah, I wasn't trying to make it a, a confusing process. But because of the open meeting law, if there's five people trying to do the same thing, then it gets a little confusing.
Right. But if you pick, you know, Jenny's got the fire chiefs, Mark's got the police, then everybody knows they're going to one person. It's not, it doesn't get to be, you know, it's not an open meeting law violation, you know?
Can each of us, each of us would not be able to have a phone conversation, though, with the candidates individually?
It's probably cumbersome for the candidate. And, I mean, it's something you can discuss with the candidate at that time when they come in.
Well, they, um...
Did you want me to, it's six fifteen. Do you want me to go right?
How about we just keep it simple? We ask the question, if they say yes, they would like to do it, have them contact you directly tomorrow?
Sure.
And you can set something up, and then we can figure it out.
Okay. Yeah, and Mike can work that out.
Sure.
The questions, everybody had a chance to go through all the questions?
Yeah.
And, you know, any follow-up questions that you want to add on? These follow-up questions are in here as just examples. But as you're hearing responses and there are other follow-up questions you want to add on, feel free to add them on.
Are you gonna do the first three, Lorraine?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, we're pretty much on a tight time constraint. So, we get down to question ten out of the thirteen, and we run out of time. Do we stop it there or do we go over?
No, I think we have to go over.
We go over.
And then be consistent with all the other ones?
Because we have to be consistent with all of them. Yeah. Bob has his one-minute sign to wave in front of the candidates.
Well, it's keeping, keeping time tonight.
Was Bob suggesting that, say, we have the candidates come back, like, tomorrow? Have them stay at Town Hall? And then maybe individually, we go in and talk with them?
No, no.
He didn't say that? Okay. That's not an idea to be thrown out?
No.
Okay.
Mark, may I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Should we grab a picture when they're sitting down right away? We have it done, take a picture in the hall? I mean, I want to respect whatever you guys...
I would think you can take a picture of them sitting at the table from behind us, Frank. That would probably be...
Whatever, yeah. Obviously, you want to be as minimal, least disruptive as possible.
Since when?
Good point.
Just make sure you don't get between Mark and the camera. It gets dangerous.
Oh, it does. I know.
Okay.
I think I need to go back.
I'm good. I'm right right on here. Thank you.
Hello?
Hello?
Hey, folks?
Jack?
Welcome, Jack.
Thank you. Nice to be here.
Hey, John. I don't know if you've met any of us. I know I've met you before. But as you can see, Jim and Dallas on the right, Janice, Janice Capola, I'm Mark Sullivan, Lorraine Brew.
Nice to meet you.
John Gray. Welcome.
Well, thank you.
Thanks for applying. We appreciate it.
Well, thank you for having me here.
Okay, so, Lorraine's gonna handle the first few things, and we'll move on from there.
Great. Thanks, Jack. I'll explain the interview rules to you. Just go through a couple of items, and then we can start asking the questions, all right?
Okay.
We expect the interview will last approximately sixty minutes. I'll ask a few introductory questions, and then everyone else will take turns asking additional questions. There'll be twelve questions in total. We'll close the interview with you by asking you if you have any questions for us, and also give you the opportunity to provide us with a closing statement.
Okay.
We just ask that you keep your answers focused and on point. Bob's gonna be our timekeeper, and he may wave a white paper, which is a one-minute warning to you if you're coming up on time. As we read the questions to you, we'll give you, you know, the approximate amount of minutes that we expect around each question, all right? After the interviews are completed, we're going to discuss the next steps to be taken to gather additional information for our final decision. One question that we were just discussing is if the candidates would be open to having a visit from a member of our Board to come and speak to some key people.
Sure, absolutely.
So, if that's some, if you can contact Bob Cutler tomorrow, and we could set that time up and coordinate that, that would be great. After we have that information, we'll, our next meeting, hopefully, we will be able to deliberate and then announce the decision that evening. So, we're targeting a tight timeframe, February fourth, our next meeting. We're hoping to be able to do that visit before that time. And then, once the decision is announced, contract negotiations, negotiations will begin immediately following that decision. All right?
Great. Thank you.
Okay. This first question, we'd like you to take about five to eight minutes to answer. Please tell us about yourself, your career in municipal management, your current position, and in particular, how your, your experience and training qualifies you to help Foxborough meet the challenges described in our community profile. What about the Foxborough Town Manager job has drawn your interest?
You know, we can give him a copy also, so he can reread. Bob, if you could, so he can read the question. The questions are all, starting on page two. That way, you don't have to write down everything, and you can glance back down.
Well, thank you very much. It's, I'm sure it's been a while for you. It seems like a long time for me to get here. And I, you know, I guess, in way of kind of introducing myself, I've been thinking about this job, actually, since Andy started talking about retiring. The timing wasn't right when he retired, for me, for Norfolk, or probably for you either, based on my experience at that time. But I've been in Norfolk for eleven, almost eleven years now, a year and a half as the Finance Director, and nine, I think, as of this week, as the Town Administrator. I've got a year and a half left on my contract. And my, I'm in a very good position because my three selectmen all are references for me, all wish me well here. But have all told me that they'd really like me to stay, too. So, I, I'm very fortunate. You know, I live and work in Norfolk, and so I'm very fortunate to love the job I have. My current position, you know, it's a little smaller community than, than Foxborough. It's ten or eleven thousand people, depending if you count the prisoners. But, you know, it's very highly residential. You know, it's, it's simpler in a lot of ways when you look at it from an outsider's point of view, because it's highly residential, and there's not a lot of commercial going on. But, but they're still managing the day-to-day operations of a town. There's still the public safety challenges, certainly the DPW and getting the roads in condition, and, and working with the residents and making sure that the message from the, the selectmen is, is getting out to the residents, and you're hearing back from the residents about what their concerns are. You know, over the, over the nine years as Town Administrator, I've gone, I've had one selectman there the whole time, but gone through a whole, you know, some, some short timers and some middle timers as well. And they're all, you know, working with them has, has, they've, you know, all brought a little bit more to, to the town. And it's been, it's been great working with each one of them and kind of, you know, molding my style to fit how they want to work. And I think that's what you'll, you'll find with me is I'm, you know, I was just talking to Sandra, you know, I, I kind of look at, I don't have a strong ego. I mean, I, you know, I'm okay being the, the person who's gonna carry out the orders and do what I'm told. Obviously, I want to do it the right way. But, but, you know, this is, you guys were elected as the, the selectmen. So, you know, whether it's with the Norfolk Board of Selectmen or here, I fit into the, I try and fit into the role that works best for you. As far as my, you know, my experience in the municipal, you know, we've, we've done a lot in Norfolk. We look at each thing that we've done as a team effort. You know, we've put solar fields on at our DPW, on our landfill, on our unused DPW land. We've created a DPW, merging our highway grounds, cemetery and water departments. We've created a vehicle maintenance and facilities maintenance departments, both, you know, trying to take work that we were sending out to private industry and doing those in-house, so we could do it a little more efficiently than we think we could paying higher, higher contract wages. We've also looked at things like the water department when we, when we outsourced the work, because we didn't have the expertise in-house. And we needed to, we hired a company, and we could find a way to do that efficiently while we slowly built up our team internally and got the knowledge base internally, and then eventually took, took back over from the consultants and staffed it with full-time employees. I guess what has drawn me to the Foxborough Town Manager job, you know, I started, as I said, when Andy started talking about retiring, I knew this was, I thought this was a good fit for me. You know, I, I've got a lot of training in, in private industry, and, you know, we can talk about my management skills and my financial skills. But I needed to get a, kind of my foot in the door in the municipal industry. And working with a small town like Norfolk gave me that experience. I'm looking just for a little bit bigger of a challenge. And Foxborough, to me, is a great fit. It's obviously close for me, which is very important, because it's a demanding job, and I want to be close to home, so I can give full effort to the, to the town, but also have a balance and be home occasionally, too. But Foxborough, I look at it as a, I know you refer to it in the write-up, or the Collins Group, anyway, refers to it as a mid-sized town. I still think of it as, it's got that small-town New England feel that I love. And I kind of look at this, this whole prospect for me as, as somebody would be that was thinking of coming to live in Foxborough. I'm gonna be here a long, you know, a long time and a long, a lot of hours during the week. I want to be in a place that I enjoy. And Foxborough was a community, my wife used to teach at the eighth grade here, so I know the school systems are great. I know your athletic programs are great. I know your youth programs are great, because I've taught, I've coached against them and seen my kids play against them. So, it's just, it's a great community that, I grew up in Needham. It's, it's got that, although Needham's different now, but it's, but it's got that, feels like Needham when I grew up, and it's what I call home. From an occupational point of view, you know, I don't have to tell you. You've got the Kraft Group and Schneider Electric, and, and the challenges and opportunities of working with them. I mean, that's, so, to me, the combination of the small-town New England and the, the opportunities of working with those organizations is what would make this job really interesting to me. And I certainly don't come here with rose-colored glasses. I know, you know, a lot of people look at the Kraft Group as, you know, exciting from an outsider's point of view. But I know that's, I mean, I, I know I've dealt with them a little bit as far as the Route One development and the impact on the Norfolk neighborhoods. I know it's a challenge to deal with them. I know it's a lot of work. Probably takes up a significant portion of your time and the Town Manager's time. And, but that's what's attractive to me, is, is that challenge.
Great. Thank you. Okay, the second question. Foxborough is a unique community in that we are a small town with big city complexity, intersecting highways, the stadium, small and large businesses. Tell us why you might be uniquely qualified to be the Town Manager under these circumstances. Take another five minutes or so on that.
Sure. Well, I touched on that a little bit. I guess why I'm uniquely qualified, you know, I bring, I bring my private industry experience into this as well. And I, I think a lot of that has helped make me be successful as a Town Administrator in Norfolk. You know, I started at State Street, spent seven years there, and really kind of got the foundation of a lot of the skill sets that I, that I still work with as a manager today. Certainly the financial aspects of, of creating a budget, managing a budget, monitoring revenue, putting controls into place, so that whether I'm monitoring or I'm overseeing somebody else who is, is monitoring those revenues and expenses, you need to have those controls in place and be able to understand what's going on with the financial statements. But on top of that, State Street, and then the other organizations I've worked for, really taught me how to manage people. I was probably managing people a year and a half out of college. So, I guess that's about twenty-five years now. And, you know, working with people, listening to them, trying to figure out what motivates them, other than, you know, obviously, a lot of people are motivated by money. But if you really want to have a successful employee, you got to figure out what motivates them beyond that. Why do they want to do their job? Why do they want to be successful? How can you reward them outside of money? Obviously, you try and do it with money as well. But, you know, we don't have endless pots of money. So, you can't just throw more money at them. And that really doesn't work for a lot of people, anyway. So, learning how to manage people, learning how to build teams and identify strengths and weaknesses with people, and try and, you know, take advantage of those strengths and, and eliminate those weaknesses if you can, or hide them if you have to. And then, of course, progressive discipline if you have to. You know, as a manager, I've always found that it's a lot cheaper and a lot easier to take a unproductive employee and turn them into a productive employee. You know, give them the training or encouragement or discipline, if you will, that they need to become a productive employee. If they're not gonna work with you, though, obviously, then you have to get on that path of progressive discipline and find a new employee that will be productive. So, I think, I think that private experience has given me a lot. I think, finally, just my, my work with Citizens Funds, when I, I was the Compliance Manager and Vice President of Finance there. It's a small mutual fund company. One of the things I did was oversaw the, or organized the quarterly board meetings. And, you know, a board of directors for a management company, it was a, was a small company, but it was still an impressive board. You know, we had industry leaders, and we had social activists on that board. But we also had two presidential cabinet members on that board. And so, there, you know, I kind of learned how to deal with very successful, very demanding people, and be prepared for them, how to, you know, anticipate their questions before the board meeting, so I could give them that in their packets. Made sure the packets were numbers tied out, and there were no spelling errors, and, and all the information was complete, so that we could spend less time working on, focused on the data in the past, and spend more time working on the future.
Okay. The third question. Have you read the two thousand and four Foxborough Town Manager Act? And if so, how does it compare and contrast with other acts you may have managed under?
I have. I did read it. And I, and I was, the screening committee asked me that question, too. And I, and I told them I was surprised that it was, to me, written more like a Town Administrator Act than, than, or kind of the default Town Administrator laws, if you will. So, it's very similar to what I work under now. And, you know, I guess is what I, you know, right now... you know, right now I have a town administrator, we have a home rule legislation that, that allows me to, to hire the police chief, fire chief, et cetera, but I need to get authority, you know, I need to get the selectmen to vote in a majority to, to authorize my approval. So I think it's very similar to what, to what you do and, and that makes sense to me. I mean, I don't, you know, at the end of the day, I work for the board and having the key department heads be people that the board approves would just kind of make sense to me. So I don't have, I don't have a problem. I, I think it fits almost identically to what I'm used to.
Okay. On that same question, given the way our Town Manager Act is written, have you managed, how have you managed relationships with elected boards, appointed committees and citizens under the Act in Norfolk? In your view, how would managing those relationships change under the Foxborough Town Manager Act, the way it's
If I, I apologize if I don't understand completely, so if I could start going the wrong direction, let me know, but...
The Town Manager Act in Norfolk is, do you view that as a strong Town Manager Act?
No.
Okay. So, in light that of the Foxborough Town Manager Act being of that nature, how would you envision your interactions?
I would, you know, I look for, I, I go to the selectmen and I ask, you know, we, we talk about whether it's a goal or an objective that they're trying to accomplish and we, we have a, you know, we kind of vet it between the four of us, but, you know, and I'm an active participant, but not a, not a, not a decision-maker at the end of the day, as far as that decision, as far as that process goes. So we, we come to, you know, set our, develop a set of goals that we want to accomplish and, and then I take that. Sometimes they, you know, one of them will be assigned to kind of work on that project with me. Other times, they just delegate it directly to me and, and I go off and then report back at the next selectmen's meeting or, or at the future selectmen's meeting. So again, I don't, I don't see, I see that process continuing here. You know, I'm not, whether I, you know, I'll come to them with a, you know, at the beginning of the year with a, with a set of what I think are the goals that I think we should accomplish and they're doing the same things and then we merge them all together. And at the end of the day, they, they, they put the list together and, and we go on from there and, and I would suspect that the same, the process is not too different from what goes on here or what I expect it to happen.
Great. Any follow-up questions from anyone on that?
Anybody?
How's that? Okay.
Number four would be Ginny.
Number four, Ginny.
Good evening, Mr. Hathaway, and thank you for applying for the position of Town Manager.
Thank you.
I lived in Norfolk for about six months while I was building my house in Foxborough and it is a lovely town and if I were not contracting for the house in Foxborough, my husband and I probably would have bought the house we were in. It's a lovely town. Foxborough is both a modest-sized suburban town and home to a very large entertainment and real estate development firm, the Kraft Organization. What in your background prepares you to lead the town through the complex processes of managing the short, the short and longer-term relationship with the Kraft Organization?
Well, anybody, I guess the short answer is anybody that comes and tells you they've worked with a group like the Kraft Organization would either be naive or untruthful. You know, it certainly is a unique organization and I've, you know, I've only dealt with them a little bit. Again, when, when Patriot Place was going in and there was an, you know, we were, Norfolk expressed our concerns about the impact on Route One and then the overflow traffic that we, we had a neighborhood that was very concerned about their impact on, on, their impact on their neighborhood. So I, you know, so I've, I've dealt a little bit with the Kraft Organization, some through the Foxborough Planning Board and, and other land use boards and then, then some directly with Foxborough and their engineers. So I, I have a taste of the challenge that you're talking about and I know it, it's, it is a significant challenge. So I guess my answer to that would be, you know, obviously looking at, it's a whole different scale, but, but dealing with the developers in Norfolk, it certainly is different because they don't have the resources the Kraft Organization have, but, but we have a few developers, one residential and one commercial, that own fairly significant portions in our commercial district or, or out in our residential subdivisions. And, and they're, you know, they have very high, they know what they want and they have very high expectations and they're very, they don't really want to be told what to do. So, so dealing with them is, is a challenge and you have to be very straightforward with them about what the town's objectives are, what the town's rules and bylaws are and kind of set, just set the, set the line and not be afraid to say no to them. You have to convince them, whether, and, and I guess dealing with them or dealing with a union, you have to convince them that in, it's in our best interest to try to find a win-win situation because if they're not successful, the town's going to have a problem if they, if, because if they end up closing businesses or whatever. So you have to convince them that, so you want them to be successful. And at the same token, at the end of the day, if, if it's not successful for the town, then we're not going to be able to support them with the infrastructure that they're going to end up needing at some point. So you have to build up a collegial relationship with them and try and find a way to, to convince them that, you know, at the end of the day, we need to find a win-win situation. And one way I always try and talk about it is, you know, I want to try and find, find an arrangement that we can have that we can get up, we could switch seats and, and both be happy with this deal. Because I don't want to, you know, I can't afford to give you everything that I have and I know you can't, you know, at the end of the day, you can't afford to do that either. My only other, I guess, just analogy to working with the Kraft Group would just be my experiences throughout my private industry of working with portfolio managers, you know, high-wealth individuals, certainly, again, not of the caliber of the Kraft Organization, but still multimillion-dollar folks who, who, you know, don't really sometimes care what the rules are and I was the compliance manager for a bunch of portfolio managers and the owner of the company was one of those portfolio managers and I, and I had to deal with her and, and tell her, you know, this is the, whether it's the NASDAQ rule, the SEC rule, or the, what's in the prospectus, this is the way that, you know, you're, you're doing something that's not correct and I need you to fix that. And she didn't want to hear that and some of the other portfolio managers didn't want to hear that either, but at the end of the day, the rule is the rule and, and I, and I don't make the rule. If you want to go work with me on changing the rule, we can do that as well, but for today, this is the rule.
There's a follow-up question. I think you've probably already answered it. Please describe some approaches that might be considered for managing project negotiations and continuously improving communication. Is there anything you want to elaborate on or do?
No, I think, well, I guess just, all my unions, I think, you know, even one of my references is one of the union, union folks. I always tried to, you know, give them a full, full data of what the town's recent, you know, town's financial situation was and, and expected to hear back from them what, what their full objective was before we started negotiations. You know, does it always work out that way? No, but, but that's, you know, the, my objective was to try and have a good conversation really before we start negotiations and, and have a good relationship with them, you know, for the three or four years leading up to negotiations so that when we sit down, we, you know, I understand their business, if you will, and, and they understand my financial resources. And at the end of the day, we try, again, try to find that win-win situation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Jim?
Sure. I'll paraphrase this a little bit. The town of Norfolk has economic development areas, either existing or potentially future economic development. I know 115, 1A up around the center. Could you explain briefly what those areas are and then what, since you've been there? What, how have you brought that to the, brought development into those areas? And conversely, since you've been there, is there anything that you would have done differently that if you had to do it over, you or your staff, that you would have done differently in those economic development areas?
Well, I started in 2005, so I haven't had a real stellar economic time to work in, so it's been, some people blame me for that, but some of the things we've done are we've created expedited permitting districts at the 115 and 1A intersection that you talk about and also in the center of town. And so, we've given landowners the opportunity or applicants the opportunity to, to come to the town because we had a reputation and we, we still do, at least according to the screening committee, of Norfolk is very difficult to build in and, and we've, you know, the selectmen know that, I know that and, and we've been trying to change that for a long time. Selectmen through their appointments on certain boards, you know, the town through, through elections for certain boards that are at elected positions. So we've been trying to make the town more development-friendly, but at, with the same time trying to balance, you know, keeping our home, our small-town feel. And we've been able to do that. We've, and now, and we, we developed an economic development committee that's been trying to attract business. So we've been able to, off of 1A down by the Rentham Line, we have Shire Development Park, which is about half-built out now, still has a long way to go, but, but for Norfolk, that's, you know, a pretty, pretty major accomplishment to get that park in. The medical building that's now going in on 115. So some of our efforts, I think, have been successful and we've created a zoning bylaw study committee that's kind of open to, and a roundtable committee that we invite property owners, whether they're mostly commercial, but could be residential subdivisions as well, and invited them in to come talk to us and, you know, if they've got proposals for changing our zoning, it's a way of us having a kind of open conversation about, you know, do these old, do these current zoning laws make sense? So we're just trying to do as much, have as much communication as we can with the, with the property owners and the potential applicants. Norfolk is very, it's a, you know, it's an old farming community though and it's, especially in the center of town, still working very hard to maintain that character, so it's been, it's a balancing act. To try and, we've tried to create some dense residential development in the center of town and we, we did have a friendly 40B go up, which has been great. Now we're trying to get the commercial development to follow that, that will hopefully go soon. Recently stopping, you know, recently stopping shop sold a big chunk of the center of town, so we're hoping that, we've had a couple of conversations with the new property owner, so we're hoping that there will be, finally be some progress.
So you kind of came in at the tail end of the, when it came down, it's starting to come up a little bit?
I hope so. Yeah. I get a little bit of the down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. John?
Okay. Thanks, Jack. I was told that this question is Greek, but I'll, I'll do my best.
Is that what this is?
We thought it was a weather forecast.
Every, every decision that we make as a Board of Selectmen and the Town Manager, given our Town Manager Act, has in the short term an iterative contribution and in the long term, a cumulative and perhaps an irreversible impact on the direction and culture of the town. And you actually, you touched on this in your previous answer, but how would you synthesize the vision and culture of our town and how would you temper the execution of decisions, of your decisions, to be true to both?
I liked the Greek. It was good.
In other words, how do you digest us? And how do you adjust your decisions to make sure you're following our vision and our culture? How do you get a sense for that?
I, I guess, I guess the shorter answer is just try to immerse myself as much as I can everywhere. You know, obviously, you know, my first thing that I would do when I came in would be to, to get to know all the folks in Town Hall, whether they're employees or the, the regular people that are in Town Hall doing business and try and get the, get the perspective there. But then very quickly get to know the, the departments that are housed other where, other, in other places. You know, and, and participate in, in the community as well. I mean, I just, you know, as I talked about a little bit, I, I, I look at this, I come, I guess I'm, I feel very fortunate that I, that I have a position that I, that I love and I'm all, but I, so I've been very, this is the only position I've ever applied for in 10 years. So this is a jo, this is a, a place that I feel very comfortable with because it, it has a very home feeling. It would be a place, as you said, it would be a place that I would love to raise my family if I wasn't in Norfolk. If I, you know, if I'd come out a little farther from Needham, you know, that's, because that's where I grew up. If I'd made it a little bit farther, maybe I would have raised my family in, in Foxborough because it has a great feel to it. So I want to immerse myself in the community. I talked about with the selection committee that one of my biggest advantages is, is living in the town that every time a resident has a complaint about something, I say, "Well, this affects me too. I'm a taxpayer." So how do I get over that? In this situation is, I still got to, I want to immerse myself in the community and so I feel like I'm, even though I'm not going to be a taxpayer very likely, I'm going to be, I want to be an active participant in the community and, and be a piece of the community even though I may not get my home mail here.
Are you the kind of guy that somebody would cross the street to say good morning to?
I hope so. Yeah, I think so. You know, I have a very, I have, you know, I don't think they're just feeding me a line. My, my entire staff is, is begging me not to leave. Might be a little strong, but they don't want me to leave, whether it's department heads or the Town Hall staff. I had one of the, he's going to, if he's watching, he's going to know, one, one of the guys in town who likes to complain about a lot of things, he came to my office and I, and I wasn't sure what he was going to do and he, he spent half an hour with me trying to convince me to stay. It's, it was, I, it was the biggest compliment I could have had. So I think, yeah, people try to, I mean, I think I've become a part of the community, not just because I'm a resident there, but because people feel comfortable with me and my role and I would love to have that same relationship here.
Thanks for tackling that one.
So I'm not sure I got it.
Okay, we're going to jump, jump to technology. What initiatives have you completed in other roles that have led to a greater use of technology? Creation of shared services or departmental efficiencies in order to reduce cost and increase services to the citizens of your communities?
A few things. I mean, I have a, some of my background is in technology, more as a business analyst in technology groups for, when I was at IBT. So I'm very comfortable, I've always been very comfortable with technology. When I first got here, I, I, we had an old accounting system that was on an IBM mainframe that was just, it was, it was scary. The tapes they were swapping in and out and stuff. So I got us on Munis when I first got here and, and made that available to all the department heads so they could have information at their fingertips. And then, and, but then we could also, once we got more comfortable with it, we could broadcast in information out, you know, anybody asked for, give me a ledger on the police budget, we, we were comfortable enough with that, that we could pass, email that information out to the community. You know, we've done work with our, our website to try and make it more interactive, put minutes out on the website and we, the clerk and I have created the, put a calendar out for the town meeting, you know, all the departmental meet, or I should say the board meetings and committee meetings and put the agendas and the minutes out on that system so that people can, and then people can receive, they can sign up as, on a subscription service, so when a new meeting gets posted, an agenda gets posted, it does an automatic email blast out to anybody that subscribes to that committee. So we've tried to be very, you know, obviously proactive in, in getting people involved in the commu, in the government, tried to be very transparent in our communication to people. Trying to think of, I mean, we've, we've had other technology inter, initiatives, putting the assessor's data up on, on GIS and getting that data out on our website so people can look up their property cards. We just rolled out a new payroll system, doesn't affect the community, but it certainly helps the employees a great deal. made it more efficient for us. I guess, kind of an aside, you know, we've merged some of our operations with the school business office and the town hall. They used to do their own financial accounting, so we've gotten onto the same system and we do that for them. And also consolidated the payroll system with them, and now we share an IT director as well, so.
Just to follow up, I mean, this is, you know, are there areas of government that, you know, you've looked at and say, you know, I could make these less expensive and more efficient by the adoption of technology? You know, are there natural uses for technology to make municipal departments more efficient and save money?
One of the things I'd like to, well, I don't know about efficient, but one of the things that would better service is, I'd, some of the new technology that, you know, the apps and stuff that people, that communities have where they can, you know, take a picture of a pothole and, and send it right in and, and log that and then, you know, send out a follow-up email to the person and when the system, you know, as an acknowledgement, and then when the work is done, I'd like to explore that. And, you know, if it's not cost prohibitive, look at that type of technology to, to give a better service to people, you know. And I, I think it'll, will save some money by taking, not having to take those phone calls. And there will certainly be, you know, we, more people can tell us about when there's a problem. We'd rather go fix it than, than just live with it. That'd be one area, I guess, that I would think about.
Thanks.
Sure.
Ginny?
As citizens expect that public officials to be available and accessible to them, how do you interact with citizens and what concrete actions have you taken in your previous jobs to improve direct services and communication to citizens?
I try very hard, as much as possible, and it's, it's most of the time to have an open door. I mean, there are, there's, it's a rare time when I actually close my door and, you know, what, budget preparation time. Because I tend to do, I don't have a finance director right now, so I tend to do a lot of the budget work. So I, you know, a couple hours a day I'll close my door, I should say, a couple hours a week I'll close my door just to, so I can have uninterrupted time to, to get through a couple of things that need to get done. But for the most part, I, I have an open door. You know, people can email me directly off of the website and send me a question. I try and respond within twenty-four hours, if not sooner. And I can do that. Big, and it's, the same rules go for the department heads. You know, we, we have periodic department meetings, but more so I like to meet in small groups with them, the public safety officials, the land use folks, financial people. But I give them an open door too, but, and they tend to be the biggest abusers of it. So I, so I tend, so I've kind of cracked out on them a little bit and had them try to schedule time rather than just walk in. But at least with the size community that I have right now, I haven't had a problem with being available to the residents whenever they want to meet with me. If they call me and meet me after hours or, you know, Saturday morning, I'm happy to do that too. And, and most of the department heads are, are very good about that too, though, because probably ninety percent of them live in town. I can't think of anybody that doesn't live in town. We all live in town, so it's, we, we tend to be available to the residents whenever we can.
And as a follow-up, I think you've probably answered this. What time does your business day begin and end? Do you believe, do you believe it is important to be working at town hall every day? And/or do, do you prefer to work remotely a few days a week?
There's got to be some history there that I don't, that I don't know about because the screening committee asked me that too, but I, I don't want to know what that, hopefully I'll learn about that someday in the future. I, I, I think being at town hall is important. I don't think working remotely, at least for me, you know, there may be a, there may be, and I'm not sure there are, but there may be a few specialty people who may be, you know, putting together a, a decision on a, on a land use, a complicated land use case. That it may make sense to just have them go hibernate someplace and, you know, at home if necessary to go do that. But that would be the rare exception. I, I think it's just important for people to be in the office. I had, you know, my wife and I moved up to Kittery, Maine at one point. And I maintained my job in Boston for, for a little while. And my boss was nice and let me work one, one day a week from home. And I, I didn't find it as productive as I thought it was gonna, I mean, it was great, but it's easy to get distracted at home, at least with a three-year-old.
Amen.
Thank you.
And I've been, I'm next also. Foxborough is blessed with many interested and capable citizens who are interested in serving on town committees. What is your experience working with citizen committees? And what do you feel is the town manager's proper role with citizen committees appointed by the board to address specific issues?
I haven't had a problem at all with citizen, I think, you know, if you can find somebody who's willing to volunteer, you want to take advantage of that as much as you can. Because if, I haven't found anybody that's, that's going to volunteer and has, you know, a malicious intent or, or some negative intent. There may be, there may be one out there that I don't know about. But for the most part, the volunteers, you know, we've got a community preservation committee that I, I sit on, and that is all volunteers. And then some appointed folks from other committees, but I'm the only employee there. I found them all to be very productive. Couple quirky ones, technology committees tend to be a little quirky because those people have, tend to have very strong biases towards one technology or another, so. But then again, I've had folks that have been great at that too. But if I was going to pick on one, that would be the one I would pick on.
And as a follow-up, what types of projects do you think lend themselves to citizen participation through ad hoc committees? How important is citizen participation through ad hoc committees?
I guess, again, you know, if you can, if there are folks, you know, this is, this is, you know, the town of Foxborough, and it's made up, it's, you know, it's, it's the true form of, of the purest sense of government. And, you know, if you can get, if you can find folks who are interested in, in helping because they care about their town, I want to take advantage of that any way I can. And we have a lot of volunteers in Norfolk. And I'm always, I was talking about with Sandra, where I'm always amazed at, at the folks that, that give up a lot of their time, you know, to sit in meetings with me, and I'm, you know, I'm not really getting paid at night, but I guess I am, you know, I'm an employee, so I am getting paid. You know, they spend a lot of time because they care about the town. And if, I've always found the volunteers to be very productive. And I hope I'm not walking into something that I'm not aware of, but.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mark?
Would you rather call it Jack or John?
Jack.
Jack, would you rather sit here with me or would you rather want to go down and watch the varsity basketball game right now? I'm kidding. Like most municipalities, money's tight and farsch. What are your experiences, and I think I've heard you state them quite clear already, providing evidence that you can play a leadership role in financial planning process? A process that the town believes is essential to maintain its service delivery capabilities? I mean, it sounds like it's a little repetitive, but I think we're gonna hear some more of your background again here.
Yeah, I mean, you know, most of my background is in finance, you know, either being a financial accountant in the mutual fund industry or, you know, being in the municipality as the finance director and town accountant. So, you know, I'm very comfortable. I'm, but I gotta tell you, I'm, you know, I'm very, you know, I'm very impressed by Randy. I've known him for a long, I don't know him well, but I've known him for a long time when I had my role. And I've, you know, worked with him a couple of times and talked about regionalization for this and that. And I spent some time recently looking at the website and been very impressed by all the information that he's got out there. So I would, I guess I would find it as a privilege to work with him and his, you know, he's got tons of experience in the financial services that I would look forward to working with. Again, I, you know, I'm very comfortable looking at budgets and monitoring budgets on my own. I, you know, I tend to follow the trust but verified management style. I've got great department heads who manage their budgets very well, but I'm, I'm going to look over, you know, just look at the reports at the end of the day and just make sure that what they're telling me is, is what I see in the financial reports as well. And I, I know them well enough that I can, that I can do that and not get bluffed.
Can I just ask a follow-up to that one? So could you just describe some major initiatives that you have taken in terms of trying to reduce costs so that you can maintain services?
Yeah, I guess one of them was, well, real quickly, three of them. One was creating our, our vehicle maintenance division. We, you know, we used to send out all of our vehicles to, to the local car shop and it was, it was costing us a fortune. And so we hired two mechanics and now they maintain all of our, all of our vehicles other than some of the specialty work for the fire department. So that was one. Our building maintenance division, we, we gave two of our building inspectors, we took ten hours of their time and made them the building maintenance folks. Actually thirty hours for one and ten for another. And, and it cost us a little money upfront, but the amount of money it saved us from not having the police chief and the fire chief and the library director and the COA director in charge of managing their own buildings, some of them did it great and some of them didn't do it great. You know, we saved a lot of money by not making mistakes and doing things more effectively. There was a third one that I was thinking about, I guess just.
Anything in the area of health insurance?
We're still, we're with Maya. And so, and, I mean, we've, we've been playing, you know, going out to bid. We've stuck with Maya, but we've gone out to bid and certainly reconstructed our, the planned structures a couple of times, you know, worked with the unions on that. We've actually been in kind of an unusual situation where we've been going different direction than, than most towns. We started at fifty percent and now fifty-five percent, we're now up at sixty-three percent as far as the town's contribution. We don't plan on going any farther. But then we've also, but as part of that negotiation, we've changed a lot of the deductibles and we have pretty high deductibles now. So we've been able to save a lot of money doing that. I was fortunate enough, two years ago, to be able to add a HR position. And he's done a great job looking at that and also looking at our, our other insurances. We've changed carriers on our liability insurance and saved quite a bit of money. You know, and he's going through the process, the annual process of looking to see if we should go to the GIC. Hesitant to do that, but it's nice to have that as a, as a safety net if, if Maya doesn't work out.
Thank you.
Ginny, right?
Yep. A municipality is a direct service organization. Residents make judgments about their town based on the services they received. After learning about Foxborough through your research, what do you see are the future needs of Foxborough that should be addressed?
I guess the research that I've been focusing on is, is kind of the internal organization and, I guess from two different points of view. One is just the, the employee organization and what's going on. And, you know, that's a concern to me, but I think it's one that can be, you know, I've heard you folks talk about it and I've heard the screening committee talk about, you know, the unsettled situations, particularly at town hall. I think a lot of folks are, are concerned. So my research has been there and then also, you know, looking at, obviously, the continued negotiations with, or continued work with the craft group to, to make sure that relationship stays on a, on a level in good condition. And I think as part of that, whether or not the craft organization plays a role or not, it sounds like depending on how this, some of the regionalization plans work out, but the whole sewer system negotiations work out. I think that's certainly one area that needs to be finalized. And my understanding is it's getting close, so hopefully that can be completed. And I would imagine that would allow for future growth if the town wants to have future growth, you know, continued growth. I, I think your question, if I, if I understand it, you know, talking about what, what are the residents looking for? Additional services? I can't say off the top of my head that I know of. Andy, I haven't, you know, I mean, obviously I read the Sun Chronicle every day for my own purposes. And Foxborough gets a lot more coverage than Norfolk does, so I, I've been watching those for years now too. As I said, I've, you know, since Andy started talking about retirement. I haven't, I don't recall anything that the town seems to be screaming for in terms of additional services that they're missing, but maybe you folks know something that I don't know.
So it's, so it's pretty similar to, Foxborough's pretty similar to Norfolk in, in regard to services that are being provided. And you don't see anything that Foxborough is lacking that Norfolk has.
No. We do a few things differently, but, but I don't think I would, I'm not, you know, I certainly wouldn't say this is the way we did it, so Foxborough should do it that way. I mean, we have a transfer station rather than trash, trash pickup. But if people are happy with trash pickup, that's, that's, you know, a different way of skinning the cat. I, I would love to not have a regional school system because that takes up way too much of my time as far as the budget negotiations go. Because I've got three entities to work with, really five if you count the other two towns. But having two different school districts negotiating over a big part of the budget is, is a challenge. So I'd rather, I guess I'd, to answer your question, I'd rather go the other way and bring your central schools, you know, one single school system to Norfolk if I could. But I don't think that's going to happen.
To follow up, does Norfolk have a school committee?
We have a school committee at the elementary level, and then we have the regional school committee at King Philip. But that's made up of members from all three towns, King, Norfolk, Plainville, and Rentham.
Equally?
Yep. Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a long, you know, it's a debate that, there's definitely people on one side and people on the other side. Whether, you know, from my professional point of view, I'd love to regionalize K through twelve. But there are residents in Norfolk that absolutely do not want to do that. And there are some that, that absolutely do want to do it, so it's a discussion that I won't solve tonight.
Mark?
Jack, there's been attempts in the past to build trust in, in effort to improve department performance, create a better sense of team for municipality employees. Results in these efforts have been suboptimal, I guess. How would you suggest repairing employee management relationships and rebuilding trust if you were to come in? I mean, what would be your first plan?
You know, I think you could probably tell by just the way I, I probably am more open than I, sometimes it gets me into trouble. And I don't, not, not, not really in a bad way, but I, but I tend to tell people the truth and the whole truth. And, I mean, just like this, if, you know, if you want to hear my weakness, that, that's one of my weaknesses is I, you know, I tend to lay it out for them. And I deal with employees the same way. I'm going to tell them, you know, I'm going to come in and, and, you know, as I said, one of the first things I do here is, is get to know the people in town hall and understand, really understand and listen to them and, you know, find out what's going on. You know, I, my understanding, and I could be wrong and I'd rather clarify it from them, but my understanding is, you know, maybe there were either a miscommunication or there were promises made that weren't delivered, or there, there's some communication breakdown that happened, or at least expectations that were there that, that, that weren't met. And so I'd like to hear from the people and find out what those expectations are. And then, you know, look at what can be done and then have an honest answer back to them and say, all right, you know, I can't deliver everything that was promised, but, but this is what we're going to do going forward and, and, you know, tell them the door's always open, that, you know, as we progress here and I learn more and, you know, hopefully as I get more comfortable in my position, I can tweak things the way they need to be tweaked, if, if that's the right answer, and, and make things better for them if, if I, if I all can. You know, again, I kind of treat. You know, again, I, I kind of treat the people in Town Hall are, you know, generally I've found, whether it's here or any other town, that they wanna be, you know, they're, they're good people, they wanna be here, they wanna, they wanna work hard, they wanna, they, sometimes they protect the town's interest with a, with a fervor that, you know, as they said on Downton, that wars have been fought with less fervor. And so I, you know, I, they're people that I wanna have a good relationship with and I'm gonna tell them yes or no, but I'm gonna tell them what I think is the right answer.
Thank you. Okay, Jack, so, you know, we've asked you a ton of questions and it's only fair, would you like to ask us some questions before you make a closing statement to us? Any questions for us at all?
I mean, I guess the obvious one, you know, what, so, you know, people, my department heads, you know, they all know you're a department heads. Some of my residents, you know, our old Foxborough company employees and stuff like that, and they're not all saying the same thing, but they all kind of say, you know, why, why do you want those, why do you want the more headaches? Why do you, you know, there's some, you know, not that we don't have dysfunction in Norfolk, but why do you wanna go there where there's, where there's dysfunction? You know, I guess if I look at it, how would you sell me on, on Foxborough if I, if I asked you to sell me?
Start with me? Well, I think, again, we're unique in that we have an incredible combination of a small town with a huge complex that affects our day-to-day lives in positive ways. Maybe some, for some people, certain days of the year, it's not so positive, but, you know, I think in general, the town has been successful because of, you know, not only the Route One businesses, but other businesses that we've had, you know, Snyder Electric and, and all the businesses. So I, I think we have in place a really great situation for someone to come in and manage and take us to the next level. And I think that's what we're looking for, I believe, is someone who can do that and, you know, someone who can bring our employees together, because we do have very good town employees, and create an environment for them that is motivating and productive and makes them happy to come to work every day. You know, I think there's a lot of challenges available for a town manager with experience who can get satisfaction from, from working on those types of product, projects really.
To follow up from Lorraine, I, there's a lot more emotion, I think, in the town of Foxborough, because your exact question is what I was saying to myself, why would someone like you coming from a nice town like Norfolk, lives there, raises family there, want to come here? Because it's, it's gonna be a tougher job. And I think you stated it well, it's, it's the challenge and I just think, I know Norfolk well. I've been traveling that town since I used to hitchhike there as a kid to Cliff Cycles to get my first dirt bike, or walk the railroad tracks, and I knew all the past members that worked in the Town Hall. And it, it's grown a lot in the last ten years and it was a town that was very, I looked at buying property there in the nineties and I was just, after the blockade issue I got, I just ran away. And you're absolutely right with that, it's changed. This town is more emotional, people pay attention a lot. I'm not familiar how much politically inclined people are in Norfolk, but in this town, people pay attention. They can be blog-ish, if you know what, I don't know how much blogging there is in Norfolk and, and it can be good and it can be bad and, and sometimes some people take it personally and it, it becomes very difficult, so how would you handle that? I mean, it's something you're able to handle is that challenge of the emotion that you're gonna face.
Yeah, I mean, you develop a thick skin doing this and, and, you know, I've had, we don't have the intensity of the blogs that you do, but we have an anonymous webpage that people blog on, you know, they just have to put their initials, so it's, so they can be pretty to the point on there. I don't, you know, I don't take anything that somebody says anonymously with any seriousness at all. And even if they, you know, in your case, there's a couple sources out there that, you know, people aren't anonymous and they're still seem to be taking pretty good shots at you. Or at the town manager. That's fine, I mean, I'm just gonna try and do my best job that I can and if somebody wants to come talk to me about it and, and tell me I'm doing, you know, give me some suggestions on how to do it better, I, that's fine. But if they wanna just take cheap shots at, um, somewhere and not have the, not come talk to me about it, then I don't really, I'm not gonna really pay much attention to it then.
Emotional is, is true. Passion, I like to use the word passion.
Is that Greek? Is passion Greek too?
We, we have passion on every side of every issue here and, and I think it's healthy. I think at the end of the day, to have a, a passionate citizenry where, you know, they're engaged in, in a debate, you know, at the end of the day, it will really sort that issue out. So, you know, whoever comes to, you know, manage the town of Foxborough is gonna be sometimes swept up in that passion. But understanding that, I think the town of Foxborough somewhat prides itself on that passion, that we're an engaged town and I think everyone's looking out for the best interest of the town. So if you're looking for a challenge and if you, if you, you know, wanna, wanna get your, your teeth into an issue, Foxborough will certainly welcome that.
Yeah, I, I, again, I, I mean, I already said it, I, I am. I mean, I'm, that's exactly why I'm coming there. You know, Norfolk's still a great place and, and I, and I love the people there and, and love the job, but, but there are bigger, you know, occupational challenges here that, that are interesting and I'd, I'd love to take them on and I don't...
It kind of goes back to that original difficult question of how do you, how do you synthesize the, the vision of the town? You've got, this group wants this, this group wants this, and you gotta sort of pass it down the middle and, and lead the town in a direction that everyone can get on board with. And that, that was really the essence of the question.
Yeah, and I guess I, you know, and maybe I didn't answer that as clearly as I could have, I mean, I, I guess my, my technique has, I don't wanna be critical, you know, but my technique would be maybe a little different than some others. And, and my technique would certainly be that, you know, you talk about me leading, I'm gonna lead, but I'm gonna lead with the selectman's message and I guess I'll just say it that way.
Thank you.
Foxborough is a wonderful town. We went through a rough patch. We had, for many, many years, we had very steady guidance by a former town administrator who became our town manager. We had a transition and, and it was rough. Things were changed, some people liked it, some people didn't. So now we're looking to continue with government with a, with, with the town manager. And all we're asking, all we're asking, we're asking you, or whoever, to come in and help the town get back to where we're all on the same page, we're all working together. We may not agree on things, but basically we want, we wanna work together. We wanna smooth the waters. Bob's done a wonderful job as the assistant town manager, but he's been wearing two hats. It's been very difficult, he's been wearing two hats. So now we're ready to take one of those hats back from Bob and give it to somebody with our blessing and hopefully, you know, Foxborough will continue to be the wonderful town that it is.
Great, thank you.
I'll just keep it simple. Thank you for coming in. I think it was a very productive hour. I think there's a lot of opportunity and challenges. I don't happen to think that we're as unique as sometimes we think we are. I think you said it, this is true town government, we, we work under the town manager, we've got selectmen planning board, with the exception of the, you know, craft organization, but there's plenty of towns that have large businesses, large universities, you know, different nuances. So I don't want you to go away scared that this is insurmountable. It's, I think it's a very productive and, and nice town and I wish you luck.
Thank you.
Would you like to make a closing statement?
Sure, I, I'll be brief. I think I've covered probably a lot of things that I wanted to say. I mean, I certainly know what I'm getting into. I mean, I wouldn't put my name forward here if I didn't, you know, and being right next door, you know, I know, I, you know, I know what is going on here in terms of the craft organization and, and I know the challenges of dealing with them and certainly look forward to working on those challenges and, and as I said, try and find as many win-win situations as we can, because I, I truly do believe whether it's the craft organization or, or a, you know, a subdivision, residential subdivision, you need to find a way to, to that both the town and the, and the developer are gonna be successful, because otherwise if one is not successful, you're, you're gonna end up both in an unhappy place at the end of the day. I, I, you know, I, I said, Foxborough, and a couple of you have, have said it clearly, probably a little more eloquently than I did, but, you know, Foxborough really is enticing to me because it does combine that, it has that small town feel to it. Hopefully the Town Hall will stay in the center of town someplace, but we obviously gotta do something sensible. But being, but the, I love the center of Foxborough, you know, I'm, I'm constantly going to Mass Ramir, to Norfolk, to, to Fork Kicks, to, you know, so I'm going through the center of Foxborough all the time and I love seeing, you know, kind of driving through, especially in the warmer months, and seeing what's going on in the center of town and that, so I think it's just a great community. And as I said, my wife taught here, you know, it seems like a lifetime ago, but back before our kids started going to school, she was an eighth grade teacher at the junior high, so she, she loves it here too. So I look forward to, as our kids start progressing off, I've got an eighth grader, but I've, I've gotten one out of the house, so, you know, we'll have a little more time and hopefully we can explore this way as well. You know, as far as my, my abilities go, you know, I know you're gonna do some more due diligence and, and talk to people over in Norfolk and I hope, and it'd be great if you come visit. You know, I think you'll find that the, the managers all have a good relationship with me, I, you know, I consider them friends, but, you know, when we, when we sit down and do business, we do business, you know, and I, I, they know I can't always say yes and sometimes I've gotta say no. And sometimes we're gonna yell at each other, but then at the end of the day, we're, we're still gonna have a good relationship.
As I guess.
Yep, and, and it's the same thing with my selectmen, you know, that will, you know, on camera, we'll stay pretty good, but off camera, occasionally we'll, we'll, we'll have some words with each other, but, but then we try and respect each other, if not that same day, you know, a day later. So it's, I'm, I guess I, I just, I, I, I think that's great for me, because if you, if you wanna go talk to the people over in Norfolk, because I think you'll find that I am, I'm, I'm a flexible person, I, I, I hope I'm, I think I'm relatively bright and, and I can help lead, I can lead people, so. Thank you very much for having me here. I, I thought the screening committee did a great job, very professional and they were also very, answering my questions, they were very informative and very helpful. And I did wanna say, I just passed my condolences on about Sam. I, I know his impact was, felt great distances and he certainly, he reached Norfolk and I, I never had the opportunity to meet him, but he sounded like a great person and I know a lot of my friends who are, have, are in the Boy Scouts organization were touched by him and so my condolences to you and the community and certainly the, the family.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Jack.
Thank you for the invitation. Have a great evening, good luck.
Good night, thank you.
Is this our moment to stretch or?
Yep.
So we'll just take, you know, leave the camera on, but everybody can just stand up and walk around for a minute.
Are we taking about ten minutes?
No, only four, we only got four left.
Four minutes, yeah.
We got fifteen minutes to do it, but if we can cut it to five, everyone stays on the same track.
Yeah, we'll stay, so we'll just take, just take four minutes to recoup and we'll all get back right here. We're not gonna take the cameras off, ladies and gentlemen, but we're gonna resume in a couple of minutes with the next candidate. Thank you.
That was pretty good.
I can touch my toes, man.
Yeah, I think I'm gonna stay over this watch and hold. I was just thinking of, I'll pretend.
Are you leaving us?
Yeah. Hey, did you get that thing from John? And I got it in the ground. I hope you have a good day. I have, you know, I was already on the stage. Yes, you're, this thing is nice, but it's very soon. I think I did, that's Shire's subdivision, it's hard to find. It's so, also.
It's not like us.
No, no, he's realistic.
Yeah, that was good.
All right, we got a minute. We'll be right, John, Mr. Cutler is gone to get the next candidate, William Keegan Junior. We all come back and stretch our legs and we'll resume with the same questions basically to the next candidate and Ms. Brew will take over and as soon as this gentleman marks in.
I did get it.
Talking about insurance, what's G I C?
Oh, that's the government.
Government insurance corporation? Is that like?
I don't know if it's a corporation.
I don't know if it's a corporation, but it's a government offering. Oh, that's the government.
Government insurance corporation?
I don't know if it's a corporation.
I don't know if it's a corporation, but it's a government offering. Okay.
How'd that get arranged?
He's got a sense of humor.
I'm actually amazed that we don't have a, a lot of people in the audience tonight, I mean. Excuse me?
Are you ready for?
Yeah.
Mr. Keegan?
Yeah.
We thought you were bringing him right in.
Well, I, I wanted to make sure you guys were ready and we're working on something else. Who was playing tonight at basketball?
Sharon. The last game went down to one point in Sharon.
The JV game?
No, the varsity game and the varsity game tonight.
Oh, last, last game?
They play in, one home, one away. This is our home game, so it's exciting.
Horrible refs, I gotta say, the first game.
Oh, today?
It's not the first time that they played and went down to the one point. Is that what you...
Is that what you're talking about?
In Sharon. The Sharon game last?
No, it was here. It was a breakaway and got the layup and ran out of time.
Wasn't it, the Sharon game was in Sharon?
Oh, you're talking about the boys?
Good evening.
I'm talking about the girls.
It's nice to see you all.
Hey, Bill, nice. Nice to see you.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Hi, how are you? Nice to see you. Mark, how are you?
Nice to meet ya.
How are you?
See you.
Hi, how are you? Nice to see you. Hi. Nice to see you.
Yes.
No big crowds tonight? No?
Everyone's.
Everybody's watching intently on TV, I, I take it?
Popcorn at home, yeah.
We were just commenting on that. Usually there's quite a bit of people here, at least a dozen or so. Sometimes you can't get in, but.
Okay.
As far as the capacity, but tonight everybody must be enjoying.
Well, there must be a basketball game going on tonight because I couldn't get to the parking lot almost, so that was, that was interesting.
Yeah, Sharon versus Foxborough. Good rivalry going.
That's a big rivalry game, I'm sure. Right, right, so.
That's it.
Well, well, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. I appreciate it, so.
My pleasure. Lorraine has gone through this whole process for the board, representing the board, and I'm gonna let her continue it. So she will follow the same guidelines she did with the first interview. So Lorraine, would you take over, please?
Great, thanks, Mark. Welcome, Mr. Keegan, Bill Keegan. We'll call you Bill.
Call me Bill. Bill's mine.
All right. I'm just gonna explain the rules for the interview that we're gonna follow and then we'll start with the questions after that. So the interview will take about sixty minutes.
Okay.
And I'll ask a few introductory questions and then each of the members of the board will ask additional questions following. There'll be twelve questions in total and.
Yeah, thank you.
At the end of the discussions, you know, on the questions, we'll, we'll ask you if you want to ask us any questions and also give you the opportunity for a closing statement, okay? We just ask that you keep your answers focused and on point.
Okay.
And then our plan is to, we, we'd actually like to know if it would be possible after the interview tonight, if we could set up some time for some members of the board possibly to go to your community and speak with some key individuals.
Right.
And then our hope is to deliberate and hopefully announce a decision on February fourth at our next meeting. So we're on a tight timeframe to make that happen in between.
Okay, right.
And then with that decision, contract negotiations, we would start immediately following that, okay?
Okay.
All right, great. Thank you.
Let me just say from the outset, I thought your, your selection panel was great. They were, they were really well represented and did a great job representing you as a town and as a board. Their, their questions were great, they're right on point and they were very, very, they asked the right questions and they, they did a great job. So I was really impressed by that, so I just wanted you to know that.
Very good. All right, so I'll start with some introductory questions. If you could just tell us about yourself, your career in municipal management, your current position, and in particular, how your experience and training qualifies you to help Foxborough meet the challenges that we've described in our community profile. And, you know, what about the position in our town has drawn your interest?
Okay, well, thank you. Well, as far as a career in municipal government, my entire career's been in municipal government. I started out about thirty-one years ago, working for the town of Milbury, Massachusetts as a, as a town planner. I finished my, my graduate work at University of Massachusetts and got a degree in regional planning. My bachelor's degree was from Westfield State College in history. I was in, at, at Westfield, I was, I was in the, the, the history, National History Honor Society. I was, played on the football team, started the football team at Westfield State, believe it or not. So it was a very interesting time at that, at that school. And then in, 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 moving on into, after graduate school into, into work, I, I then moved from, from Milbury as a short, actually relatively short period of time. I was there for about sixteen months. It was an entry level position at the time, so I, I moved on almost sixteen months later to Shrewsbury, which was my hometown, to be the assistant to the town manager in Shrewsbury. Who, which as I was mentioning to, to Sandra from, from your office, was the, was sort of like an apprentice, master apprentice relationship. He was the town manager of Shrewsbury for forty years and taught me a lot about this business and taught me a lot about how to deal with people and deal with, with residents and deal with boards and deal with employees. And so I've never forgotten that training and it served me very, very well throughout my career. I spent the next segment of my career in Wayland as a, as the assistant executive secretary slash personnel director. So I was, I worked there for about five years where, when I then left there to go to Hollywood, Florida, which was a big leap of faith in many ways, I served as the HR and labor relations director for a city of about a hundred and fifty thousand people. It was, had about fifteen hundred employees. It was, it was a big operation. And I worked directly for the city manager in that scenario and spent another five years working. And I had a relatively large staff. I had ten people working for me directly. And I was involved in all kinds of significant human resource and labor relations issues. Was, led that entire team, so was the cabinet member of that, of that staff. That brought me back to Massachusetts after that because my wife said, we get five years in Florida and then we're coming back home. And so I, I lived up to that, to that understanding and came back and took the job as town administrator in, in Secoak, where I still reside and spent another five years, you said five years, five years, five years, and had a great career there. I mean, it was, it was a difficult job. Politically it was very challenging. There was a lot of, a lot of big issues that we had to get through. But I hold the distinct title of being the only town administrator who left that, left on his own terms and then get fired out of the past eight or so that have been there. And I still work with them, by the way. I, they, they recently just asked me, they, they're doing some charter changes right now. They're working on their charter changes right now and asked me to do a television show for them to help work and walk through those changes for them. And I did that actually yesterday. I taped it, helped tape it for them. So it's, I still maintain a good relationship with them. I have, you know, I enjoy working with them. But my, probably the highlight of my career has been the most recent one, which is working in Dedham. I've been there for almost twelve years now. And we've done a lot together. I mean, it's just amazing what we've been able to accomplish together. Is a great board to work with, work very, very closely with and, and great department heads. I, I've appointed just about every department head in, in the organization now. And there isn't, I wouldn't trade any of them for, in, in my organization. They're just a great, great bunch of people. We have a great relationship, great working relationship, and, and we get a lot of stuff done together. We, we, the first thing I needed to do when I went there was to really sort of change the, the atmosphere. Where it was, the atmosphere was a little bit, it was one where the town was really going in a wrong direction at one time in terms of its economic viability. And they really had, they had, they had to really make an important decision as to which direction they wanted to go. Unfortunately, they made the right, they took the right, right, right direction. So we changed that and to the point where economically, we, we obviously changed the dynamic completely by Legacy Place and Hebrew Senior Life and New Britain and Charles Development, which were all huge developments for our town, but yet impacted our town in a, in a very, very positive way. We rebuilt the entire downtown square project and we've, we, and probably the most significant thing was that we achieved a triple A bond rating in that, in that whole process. One which was done in one of the most significant downturns in economic history. We, we were able to achieve that. So we're very, very proud of that. And, and so I, you know, one would think, why would I be interested in this job after all those things, all those positive things? Well, I'm a very, I'm a person who likes a challenge and one who likes to consistently, you know, move in a positive direction towards something new. And I think that I've done, done a lot there and I think it's time for me for a new challenge. But personally, you know, it's better for me too because, you know, it, I can, I can take my commute, which is about an hour, down to about twenty minutes, which is a big, big thing personally for me. But I will tell you that, but this is a really good organization. I wouldn't, I wouldn't even think about coming here unless I knew that I did the homework on you, just as like you did the homework on me. And I really looked at your, your, your financial operation is great. I think you're in good shape financially. The, the, you know, you have great public safety operations, your, your, your public works is, is in very good shape. There's some, there's some challenges. I know there's some issues with the sewer system that have to be, have to be worked on and I'm familiar with that. And we've done a lot in Dedham about that too, so I can, I can talk about it at some point. But generally speaking, this is, this presents me an interesting challenge. The whole craft dynamic with, with the stadium and yet at the same time, a, a town that wants to maintain its identity and a small town identity, but yet with a, with a, with a world-class venue. And, and how do you meld, meld the two together? And how do you, because at the same time, you have to respect the, the craft contribution because financially, they're, they're a huge contribution to our, to this town. At the same time, recognizing the fact that this is, this is a, you know, a New England community that wants to maintain its character. And I think that's, that's an interesting dynamic and to me, it would be very challenging for me to try to address that. So that's the reason why I'm here.
Great, thank you. Okay, second question. Foxborough is a unique community in that we're a small town, big city complexity, with intersecting highways, the stadium, small and large businesses. Tell us why you might be uniquely qualified to be the town manager under these circumstances? If you could take about five to eight minutes on that.
Sure. Well, I mean, it's really not much different where I'm, where I am right now. We, we're intersected by ninety-five and, and one twenty-eight. And, and we live in a, in a very dynamic place. We live right on Route One. And we've, I've been working with the, with the business community on, on redeveloping Route One as well as developing the, the Dunham Square area and also Oakdale Square and, and East Dedham at the same time. So it's, those are the, the things that have really, I think, bring my, that same level of, of, of energy to a job like this is because, you know, at the same time, you want your, your Route One developments to thrive, you also can't forget that you have downtown communities that need to, need to thrive and they have, they have to identify, have their own identity and so, and they also have to thrive as well. And at the same time, you have to make sure that your town traffic patterns work. So that you don't have people, so you, so you're not inaccessible to when, when, when you need to have people coming through the community. And residents wanna be able to live here and be, know that it can get to places without too much difficulty. So a lot of those same challenges, some things we've just done. I've been working on for the past twelve years in, in Dedham. So I think the only thing I don't have is, is a large stadium. I mean, I've, I can tell you that I did work in Secoak, at the Secoak Speedway, so I am familiar with that situation. So, and we worked on that quite a bit as well, so. So this is, I think this is the reason why I think we need to qualify. I have a, a planning background. I have a human resource background. And I also, and I have a general management background, which has really served me well in all, all these situations that I've worked in. And I have, I have a really good understanding of finances. I think the, the business community has really recognized that the, our ability to work with other people. And this past, two years ago, I was named Business Person of the Year by the Ponce de Valle Chamber of Commerce at their annual meeting. And so I was really, really, really quite, quite proud of that. And I still am for that matter, because it was a great, it showed that we had a, a great working relationship with folks working in the business community as well. So I think that was really important.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'm assuming you have read our two thousand and four Foxborough Town Manager Act? And if so, how does it compare and contrast with other acts that you may have managed under?
It's very similar in many ways to, to Dedham, though I, though I will say Dedham actually has a little bit more authority. And they're actually working on the, and they just, and they're in the process of trying to change that to a, a manager's form as well. So I, I, career-wise, I've always wanted to be a manager. I mean, this is, every, every person in our business thrives to, aspires to be a manager someday. Cause it's really the pinnacle of your career in many ways. Sure, I could want to be a city manager someday, but I really don't have an interest in doing that. I like working at the, at the, at the local level, working in a, in a community where I can actually meet people and talk to people and, and get to know the community and, and understand and be involved in the community in many ways. So, but as far as the, the charter goes, the appointing authorities, there is a lot of similarities to the appointing authority, developing the budget, developing the, the organizational chart that, that is very similar to us in many ways. Now, I understand that the, the board has some, some appointing authorities and others, other individual departments, commissions have, have their authority as well. That has never really troubled me though, because we have that same scenario in, in Dedham. But I've always worked well with those boards and commissions to try and develop, to help them with their process to hire someone or to help them with their staff situations, so much so that they actually come to me and ask me for my advice on, on those kind of situations. So it, it doesn't really matter where the, how the charter is, is actually structured for me. Because, you know, to be effective in this job, it doesn't matter what the charter says. It's how effective you can be by developing relationships and, and using the right level of diplomacy. It's really, really important how, how effective you can be.
So based on your experience then, this is a follow-up. Based on your experience then with your, those relationships established in your role in Dedham, given those subtle differences then between our acts.
Right.
How would you view managing those relationships in the, you know, under the Foxborough Town Manager Act?
It's all about communication and, and, and being at, you know, a meeting and, and getting to know people and getting, and gaining their, their trust and confidence that you're gonna do the right thing for them. The role that I've always played in, in government is to, is to listen more, you know, listen proportionally, two ears to one mouth. You know, and, and use that, use that, that equation quite, quite effectively. In other words, I, you know, I listen a lot more than, than, than I talk about issues. And I'm sure I'm talking a lot tonight, but, but more often than not, I wanna know what's on people's minds, is, is what's, what's important to them. Because at the end of the day, and if I was to be the town manager in this community, the board, board sets a policy. And the board, and that's the policy that we're guided by. I will help you develop that policy. I will help you implement that policy, but ultimately you set the policy. And it's really important that, you know, that's respected in terms of the process. And that I try really hard to, to maintain that level of respect mutually. Because at the same time, you know, I respect what you do. I, I really want you to respect what I do. And that's, and it's really important that we have that mutual understanding. And that's only earned by, by, by doing the right thing and, and by developing that, that level of trust. That's really important.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you.
And thank you for applying for the town manager's.
Thank you.
Position. Foxborough is both a modest-sized suburban town and a home to a very large entertainment and real estate development firm, the craft organization. What in your background prepares you to lead the town through the complex processes of managing the short and longer-term relationship with the craft organization?
Well, as I, as I stated earlier, I, I've, I've already developed a, a good working relationship with, with the business community. I have, as, as you can see, we have a lot of really high-end developments along Route One already in, in Dedham. And that, and that was working directly with the developer for that project, working directly with the, the construction teams to make sure that, and the boards and, and commissions that were involved in that decision. I mean, the Board of Selectmen had it rolling up in terms of liquor license issues. The planning board obviously had a major role in terms of planning the development itself. And also the, the Board of Health, working with the, and, and working with the, the other boards and commissions, Conservation Commission that would be involved in a, in a project like that. Working with the craft organization is, is one, it's really no different than if, if it's on a small scale or a large scale. The issue is, the issue is essentially the same. The question is that they can be a little bit more complex in some cases than others. Again, it's about developing a working relationship where we have mutual respect for each other and understand that we have a job to do as well as they have one to do. We understand that they are a major contributor to this organization and to the town. But the issue is, is that they, they need to respect the, the dynamics of the town and understand that, that it's something we have to do. We have to protect the, the town's interests in many ways. At the same time, we have to also blend it together so it works, works really, really well. And, and it can be done. I mean, I'm, I've seen it done. I've done it many, many times. That, that was a big concern when we first did Legacy Place. People said, that's, that's too much development in one time. And yet we had, at the same time, we had a two-hundred-million-dollar project in Legacy Place. We had a four-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar project on the other side of town being developed by Hebrew Senior Life. And we were developing both at the same time, but yet we maintained our identity. We maintained our, our sense of, of respect for the community and we addressed all the concerns that, that the residents have. It meant having public hearings. It meant having, listening to folks and addressing their concerns in a proactive way. It was, it didn't mean sitting back and waiting for those concerns. It meant going, going out and meeting folks and understanding what they, what they, what their concerns were.
And as a follow-up, please describe some approaches that might be considered for managing project negotiations in continuously improving communication.
One of the things that, that, my wife will aspire to, to tell you this, but she doesn't get to see me nearly as much as she'd like to because I'm always, I'm, I'm, I'm a bit of a workaholic. And the reason I say that is because I get out there and I, and I meet people one-on-one. But it's, it's more than just developing that one-on-one relationship. It's, it's, it's picking up the phone and, and talking to people when, when you see a problem arising, making sure that you have the right people at the table when issues come up. And when you have a development issue, I mean, one of the things that we did in Dedham was develop a, a, a development action team, which was made up of the town planner, the, the town engineer, the DPW director, the police chief, fire chief. And brought them all to, so when somebody walked into town to try and look at a new development, they would come to us and say, okay, we, we need all these questions answered before we even entertain a project. So we brought that, that dynamic to the town and the economic, economic development person sort of leads that effort. So we brought that, that dynamic to the town, and the economic, economic development person sort of leads that effort. So, um, I was doing that before the economic development person was there. So we kept that same dynamic rolling, and as a result of that, even the small developments, where I would take the time to go to those meetings and listen to understand what the issues were so that we could really, really get a lot of stuff, uh, so we could have a mutual understanding of what the issues were. So it means from the very beginning, having a good understanding of what the needs are of that development, and so that they understand what we can do, what we can't do. If there's an issue, dealing with the sewer issue, dealing with a road, dealing with a, a public safety matter, they're going to know those issues right up front before we, before they, before they even put a, uh, a shovel on the ground.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure. This, this question, I, I think you touched on it in little bits and pieces, but it'll give you the opportunity to put it all together.
Sure.
Whether it be Edum or Hollywood, Florida, Shrewsbury, Whalen, Milbury, what's on your resume? Each of these towns probably have, um, economic development corridors or nodes, some newer, some older.
Yep.
In your career, um, what can you personally take responsibility, you and your staff, for putting together and, and bringing it forward? And also, probably as importantly, conversely, any of the failures, what would you do differently? With you and your staff that things didn't go the way that you had anticipated?
Well, some of the most recent ones, of course, Legacy Place was probably one of the biggest ones, of course, but, um, and I, and that was, you know, I can't say that it was all just me, I mean, it's, we have a team that, that works really, really hard together, but, but we all had an, an important role, and it was up to me to make sure that everybody did its job to, every, every one of my staff members. And, um, and we maintained relationships with the boards to make sure that everything was getting done timely. The, uh, downtown development, redevelopment of Dunham Square was, uh, probably one of the most significant projects I've been very, very proud of. That, and that project went, um, was, was done on time, was done under budget, and it was, uh, it was done very effectively. Now, I just noticed that recently there was an article in, in The Globe about some, some folks saying, saying they weren't fully happy with every aspect of it. But that's not different than any other project that's ever been done. There are, it's still, we're in the, the, the phase of trying to finish those last pieces of it. And so when, when we get to that point, we're gonna, it's gonna be one that everybody's very, very proud, which most people are already. I mean, I can tell you that it's been a very, very great, it's been a great project. But that was one where we have a development team, uh, our, our Dunham Square Development Team, uh, was, would meet on a weekly basis during construction. And that, we would hear from the town engineer and also from the engineering team as to what the issues were, what kind of problems they were running into. If we ran into problems with, with businesses or residents, they would talk to, they would bring those issues to our forefront, and we would address them at that, at that meeting, so that we constantly kept the project going because we were able to address those things right, as, as quickly as we could. That worked out very, very effectively.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bill, um, I'll, I'll try to get this one a little bit more succinctly. Every decision that's made by us, Board of Selectmen, and given our Town Manager Act by you, has in the short term an iterative contribution, and in the long term, accumulative contribution or perhaps an irreversible impact, if you go down the wrong road, you mentioned this earlier. And it has an impact on the direction and culture of our town. And you said that Edum had a choice, you could go left or right, and you said they chose the, the right direction. How do you synthesize or, or digest the vision and culture of the town? And how do you temper or adjust your decisions to be true to both?
Well, the first thing you can do is, is understand what that, what the, what the, what the community wants. I mean, and that's by getting out there and holding sessions where, visioning sessions, where people really can contribute to that, to that thought. Because, you know, it, it, it's interesting, but, you know, most communities want good schools, most communities want, um, you know, good roads, they want public safety to be, to be a good, uh, good program for them. Uh, they want to be safe in their homes, and, and they want good services. I mean, they, they want the government to be responsive to them. And the only way you can, you can get that is if you communicate with folks and, and hold forums where people can talk about what's important to them. I mean, a lot of people will come to Selectmen's meetings, I, you know, I get that, but, but not only, not every time there's a focus on what the, where the, where the strategic direction is for that town and where that wants to be done, where, where it wants to go. We held several meetings over the years where we just talked about strategy, you know, where do we want to go? And, um, what would you like your community to look like in the next ten, ten, fifteen years? And I remember having that meeting in, in Edum, um, about ten, twelve years ago, about ten years ago, we had that meeting. And we said, "We, well, we really would like to see a, a thriving downtown and a, a thriving Route One," and, and, you know, and, and so we, we took that as a mission statement to us, that this is what we're going to do. And, um, and understood that, at the same time, people wanted to have a good school system, and they wanted to have a, a DPW operation that was responsive to their needs. They wanted their trash picked up on time, they wanted their streets cleaned, they wanted, they wanted good solid pavements on their roads. All those things were important to them, so you know what? We put all those things into, into a game plan, and we developed a strategy to address every one of them. And, um, and we're all very proud of that, because we all, it wasn't just me, it wasn't, none of this stuff was just me. It was because we agreed, and I helped with putting together a strategy that we all participated in to get to that point. But it wouldn't have happened if we didn't have that level of cooperation and understanding, and that's, and I gotta tell you, that's, that's really big. It's really, really big.
Oh, thanks.
No, thank you.
I gotta jump into technology.
Okay, sure.
Okay, in Edum, what initiatives have you, actually, Edum or Seekonk, what initiatives have you completed in other roles that have led to the greater use of technology, creating a shared services or departmental efficiencies in order to reduce costs and to increase services to the citizens?
Well, what, you know, and it's interesting, we're, we're coming through an era now where we've developed webpages, and we developed all those, those fundamental pieces, and now social media is the big, the big thing. But, you know, it's interesting, when we did, we did the Dunham Square project, we, we used, uh, we used Twitter, we used, uh, Facebook, we used, um, we used our webpage to, to, and we had, we had a dedicated webpage just for that project. So people could, and so if we had something going on in that project, we could actually Twitter them, uh, within minutes, they would know that was going on. So that was really a, a nice, a positive step in that direction. I also took the, the technology operation that we had in Town Hall, and I, I blended them with the, with the school department. Because it was important that, you know, there really should be one technology theme for a community. I mean, granted, you know, everybody, every department has a, has a unique aspect and unique need that they, they have to, have to address. But ultimately, it should be a similar platform, there should be similar, um, you know, use of, of technology so that it's, it's consistent throughout the community. Let's face it, I mean, I, my goal has long been that we, that we, um, that we, uh, that we go to an e-government type of format where people can pull up on their webpage and not have to come to Town Hall to do their business. Not, it's not that we're not happy to see them, we certainly should be happy to see them, but we should make it convenient for them so they don't have to leave the confines of their home to, to come to Town Hall unless they really have to. So the idea is, is to put more things onto their webpage, make things more electronically oriented. And we've been doing that in Edum, we did it in, in Seekonk, actually developed the first technology department in Seekonk when I was there. And, um, and so it's, it really, it means that, uh, we want to make life easier for folks. You know, and we're, we live in the information age, if we don't, if we don't embrace that, if we don't deal with that, then we're, then we're taking a step backwards.
Okay, is there any, um, is there any area of government that, um, sort of cries out to say, you know, engage me with technology that could be improved and made more efficient?
I think the, um, I like to see more done with, with permitting and, um, and doing more in, in that line, that line of work. And also with, um, bill paying and, um, in, in, allowing, and buying people to pay tickets and things of that nature. Those are things that I like to see more done with that. But I also, generally speaking, want, people want to be able to evaluate their budget, the town's budget, and see it, you know, in more detail online. Um, I see that Arlington recently come up with a new, a new approach towards dealing with that, which I want to look into and, and study a little bit closer. But it's sort of like a, a live budget scenario, so people can understand how their dollars are being spent. Like an open checkbook, if you will, so they know, so they can have greater accountability in that respect. You know, people, it, we should be an open book. I mean, I mean, granted, I mean, there are certain things you have to, you know, and have to limit yourself to, but, but generally speaking, it should be an open book. I mean, how we, how we do our business, we're not, we're not, we shouldn't be afraid of what we do, we should be proud of what we do.
Super, thanks.
Okay.
Our citizens expect their public officials to be available and accessible to them. How do you interact with citizens, and what concrete actions have you taken in your previous jobs to improve direct services and communication to citizens?
Well, we've, I, first of all, I, I try to get out and, I walk in the annual parade. I, I, you know, I, I go with the boards to, uh, to walk in our annual parade. We have a Flag Day parade, but it was one of the most unique, most unique parades in the country, because it's always held on, we don't do a Fourth of July parade, we do it on Flag Day, which is June fourteenth. So it's kind of unique, and so we, so everybody gets to march in that parade, and, and I do that every year, but that's just one, that's a small thing, obviously. But, but I make myself available to any resident who con, wants to contact me, I, I either through email, they, you know, I, I do a television show, which I do, um, in fact, I have another one coming up, uh, next week as a matter of fact, where I reach out to, I ask people to write in questions. And it's called Ask the Administrator, what, if I did it here, it'd be Ask the Manager. And, and people ask questions, and they, they allow the, allows them the opportunity to ask me any question they want. And no question is too crazy, it, it, it just, it is what it is. And, and then what I do is I take that information, I circulate it to all my department heads, and I say, "Okay, I need help with some of these answers, you know, what's, what's our answers?" I produce the information, and then I do a television show and respond to all the questions. I make myself available to people, I mean, I, you know, if, if you ask anybody, and I encourage you to do this, is come back, come into, into Seekonk, or, I'm sorry, but you couldn't go to Seekonk if you want, but if you can go to Edum and just talk to people there, they'll tell you that I'm a pretty accessible guy. That, you know, people want to come in and talk to me, they can come in and talk to me. I try very hard to, to make myself available. I can't always be there for them all the time, but I'll make an appointment with them if I can't be there, and I'll, and I'll, and I'll make sure that I get to see them.
I just wanted to ask a quick follow-up on what you just said there on the first one. So, um, accessibility, as you said, to people and citizens, what would you, if a board member was to call you, how would you react and what timeframe?
That, usually that moment. You know, I, I, I don't, uh, it, it works, it works this way, that, you know, uh, obviously if my staff, if they need, if something, I'm walking, and they need me right away. But board members always get priorities, I mean, they, if, if a board member calls me, I need, I'll respond immediately. If you send me an email, I'll respond to that immediately. If I can't, if, or if I can't give you the answer, I'll say, "I'll get you the answer, I'll get it back to you later today," or the next day if I can't, if you get it done that day. But, um, board members require, get my immediate attention, that's just the way it works. I mean, you can ask any of my board members, they'll tell you that. You know, I, I try very hard to communicate as fast as I can to them. I have a great relationship with the board chairman, um, who we talk on a, you know, a couple of times a day, uh, just about different issues, and he updates me on stuff that's, that's going on, or if he sees something, he'll call me and say, "Hey, look, have this, we're having an issue here, you need to look, you need to have somebody look into this." It's a great relationship, I mean, I, I can't be effective, I can't be effective for them unless they communicate with me. And, and I encourage them, I say, "Look, it's not just about me communicating with you, it's about you communicating with me." So as board members, if I were to be the successful candidate for this job, I'd encourage you to, to reach out to me as often as you could so I could, uh, understand what's important to you as, as individuals and collectively as a board.
And I just had a follow-up to my question. Um, what time does your business day begin and end? Do you believe it is important to be working at Town Hall every day, and/or do you prefer to work remotely a few days a week?
My, my day begins at, at somewhere between eight o'clock and eight-thirty. Uh, our office opens at eight-thirty. And after that, can't tell you. It just happens, my days go as long as they can go, I mean, it just, it is what it is. I'm, um, it's typically four-thirty, but I don't think, I think probably I've seen five, four-thirties in twelve years. It just doesn't work that way. I, um, it, it's, I'm a pretty dedicated guy. I mean, I, when I go to, go to work and, and do my job, I'm, I'm there. I mean, I, I certainly, I make myself available professionally to attend professional conferences and to miss professional meetings because I think that's important as a manager, that we stay connected with other managers, so we understand what's important and the issues that surround us, uh, both on a, on a, on a, in a, a statewide scale as well as a national scale. But at the same time, um, I make myself available to, you know, walk around and to talk to people and to get to know, um, what's important in their, in their offices as well. Also, it's, it's important that, that the public knows that, that I'm around. And it's really important that they can connect with me when I need to. So, I mean, granted, I take vacations, I take, you know, uh, time off when I can, but I don't have a, I haven't taken a lot of sick time, fortunately. And, and that's a good thing, so, I mean, but generally speaking, I'm around.
So you, you're generally in Town Hall, you're not?
Well, no, I, I wouldn't say, I don't, don't let myself just to Town Hall. I mean, I do meetings with, uh, you know, other departments. I mean, the school department, I'll go over to DPW, you know, the police department, fire, the fire department, whatever the case may be. Although, most, a lot of times they'll come and see me in my office because it's just easier to meet there. But, um, or I'll, I'll go out and, and to, if I need to go to a neighboring town for a community, for a meeting or something like that. But it's, uh, but I, I spend a lot of time in town.
Yeah, so you don't tell a commu-
I, no, I, I, the only time, the only time I tell a community is where during a snowstorm, I'll send out an, an, you know, an emergency alert to, to the community on, on how to handle issues, you know, like, if we have, if we have a snow emergency, in effect, I communicate that. And something technology-wise, I didn't mention earlier, but, but I instituted the Code Red system, which, uh, allows me to, uh, mobily connect on, on my computer. I can, I can connect with all the residents in town and let them know that there's an emergency or a snow emergency in place, or if there's some kind of a, a power outage or something like that that we can handle in the neighborhood. So it lets, it sort of alerts them to what's going on. And that's been very, very effective for folks, and people like that. I did, it's, I, you know, it's funny, one person said to me one day, they said, "Well, you know, I really liked the fact that you called me, but I don't know who you are." So, so I, then of course I started with, "Well, this is Bill Keegan now, you know, the town administrator calling to tell you that this is the situation." So it's just, but people like to be contacted, and, and the fact that they know that they can do that, that I can do that is, it really means a lot to them. I, I had an interesting, I, I want to share just a brief, quick story that, um, that a, that one, a local businessman, business person, uh, who, who told me this just the other day. I do my dry cleaning in town in, in, in Edum, and I, and I go there, uh, once a week to do my dry cleaning. And during the construction, they, we did construction, we rebuilt the, the Route, the Route One Bridge over Harris, the Harris Street Bridge, what is, was known over Dunham Square. And then two years later, we started Dunham Square construction, and this person's business is located right in Dunham Square. And, and I told her, I said, "Look, I will never stop going to you during this construction because I, I, you need the business and you need, need the help." And you know something? She's never forgotten that. And she said that to, to, to customers that come in, she goes, "You know, Bill Keegan does his dry cleaning here." And, and he's, and, and she was really impressed by that because she felt, she felt I didn't abandon her during a difficult time. And that's what it means to be effective in our job, is the fact that people will remember those little things. It's the little things you do for people that, that makes it, makes my job, uh, more effective in, in many cases, so.
Thank you. And my next question, uh, Foxborough is blessed with many interested and capable citizens who are interested in serving on town committees. What is your experience working with citizen committees? And what do you feel is the town's proper role with citizen committees appointed by the board to address specific issues?
Well, first of all, I, we do that a lot in Edum. I mean, we have a lot of citizens committees, and I welcome that because I'm always amazed by the level of talent that we actually have in our community because, um, each, each year, we come up with new, new members and new interests and do, and new directions for things that people want to study and evaluate. And, uh, it is time-consuming, I will tell you that, it's, it is, but I will tell you that I learn a lot from understanding people through those meetings. And it's, and it's, it's important that we listen to folks at those meetings and get their input because they ultimately lead to the much bigger prod, uh, bigger picture issues that we need to address. I think it's really important that we have those committees. It's really important that we respect the members of those committees and respect their input. Right now, um, I've, I've been working on a new, um, new bus route for our local, local bus that we have. And, uh, so I formed a, a working group, uh, of about maybe six or seven citizens who come in, and we meet, you know, every two or three weeks to develop a new map of where we want to take that bus and, and to provide a new direction for how we're going to use that bus. Because at one point, uh, we, you know, the, the, the radish had dropped off to a point where I really couldn't justify the expenditure. So they actually, uh, they said to me, you know, and in fact, I, uh, they, I actually proposed, look, uh, cutting back on it at, at Town Meeting, and folks came back to me and said, "You know, we want to study this further." And, um, so we, we removed it from the consideration at Town Meeting, and they brought it back. And we, and we actually come up with some really interesting ideas on how we can utilize that service. It's because those people actually, it impacted them to a point where they really felt that I needed to understand the, the real issues associated with that. So I, I find it, I find it very helpful to me personally, to have that.
And I think you answered this, what types of projects do you think lend themselves to citizen participation through ad hoc committees?
Well, it's, it's, the issues that I just talked about was with, like, the local bus issue, but it's, um, it's, it's building projects to a degree. I mean, understanding what people will support in building projects, what they think is, is important to them. Certain, certain types of style of building or a certain type of, of, what should be, what should go into that building. That's important, and it's also important to, um, you know, just bylaw considerations. If we want to change bylaws, um, you know, we should have input before we bring them to Town Meeting. Because ultimately, when it gets to your level, we want to have all those issues vetted so that, so that they become a lot smoother. So, so there's no surprises when, when it gets to your level. That's really important. I mean, I, I think our board does a very good job of that, and I, and I, and I want very much to carry on that same kind of approach, uh, if I were to come here.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Bill, like most municipalities, money is tight in Foxborough. What in your experience provides evidence that you can play a leadership role in the financial planning process? A process that the town believes is essential to maintaining its services?
Well, I can tell you that in thirty-one years, I've never asked for an operating override. I've, during the, during the, the economic downturn, I don't know if I laid off a single employee, but yet we maintain the level of service. We didn't hire anybody during that period of time, but we actually restructured operations, so that we made our, our organization more effective. So, we used the same dollars, so we didn't grow the budget significantly. We, we try to stay within our revenue, revenue stream, and then we also, and I, you know, and the, and the real test of that was the fact that we just recently rated as a triple, given a triple A bond rating. But I think what's, what's good about the financing, the finances that we've had, is that we've been very considerate in, of the, of the residents' concerns, that we wanna try and keep the tax rate down. Now, our, our tax rate's still relatively high. But I will tell you this, that during the past year, you know, we, we've, in the past two years, we've actually tried to trim that, that impact as much as we can, so we don't impact residents any further. We've had, we've had debt exclusions. I, I will tell you, that's something that we have only used a couple of times. But we've, we've actually created a scenario now where we have, that we use the meals money, the meals tax and the hotel motel tax, just for, strictly for building projects now. So, we're using that as, as a way to, to leverage those, that money for, for new buildings. So, that's our, our new strategy for that. We've-
Don't say that too loud around here.
Oh, no. Okay, all right. But we've, but we've tried to find new ways to, to address our long-term finances. I mean, during the, it was interesting at the, at the MMA conference this past weekend, the House Speaker mentioned three communities in the, in the state of, of that. He was so proud of the, the way that you, we used the, the health insurance legislation to revamp our, our health insurance program. And we did that. We saved two point eight million dollars by doing that. And we took most of that money and plodded into our OPEB liability. So, we, we're one of the few, few communities in the entire state that can say that we actually, we met our, our annual retire, annual required contribution towards our OPEB liability. So, that, that's because we, we took the time to really think that through and, and to strategize over what's, would be the, in the long-term best interest of the community and financially, build a budget that was, that was sustainable, not one that was, that's difficult to maintain every year.
Thank you.
That's Negan. A municipality is a direct service organization. Residents make judgments about their town based on the services they receive. After learning about Foxborough through your research, what do you see are the future needs of Foxborough that should be addressed?
Well, what I found is, I know you've got some issues with the sewer system that need to be addressed and the, and the capacity of that, so that needs to be something that's gonna have to be looked at. Your, your trash situation is a little bit interesting to me and how that, that's handled, because you don't actually, it's not really clear as to, you have a person that collects the trash, but people don't, there isn't any one, there wasn't a, a set vendor for the town. There's one that actually is a fallback person, but not a set vendor. So, that's kind of a, that, that, that's a little bit-
Yeah, we're, we're out of that business.
Yeah, you're out, so you're out of the business altogether, basically. So-
We offer choice.
I see. Okay, all right. So, that's different from what I've, what I've used to see. So, I will say, that's a little bit, a little bit unique to me. But, but obviously, one of the things that, that are important is, is your, your basic services, water, sewer, your, which are all challenges in, in most communities nowadays. But I find that most people wanna see paved roads, they wanna see, you know, clean streets and, and, and good sidewalks and good school systems. And I think that's, you've done, you've got a good jump on all of that, but there's still, I'm sure, a challenge, which, to how you do your roads and how you can fix those over, over time. Everybody has that challenge, and it's one that which you have to, we developed a, a pavement management program in Dedham that we, we certainly, we dedicated a certain amount of money each year to, to fix our roads, and we also leverage the Chapter Ninety funds as much as we can to do that. So, we, we constantly maintain that investment.
Thank you.
Okay, Bill, there's been many attempts in the past to build trust in an effort to improve department performance and create a better sense of team for municipal employees. Results of this effort have been suboptimal. How would you suggest repairing employee management relationships and rebuild the trust?
That's, that one's relatively easy for me, because in a sense that we, we, I, I communicate with my department heads on two, two levels. One is that we have a monthly department head meeting where all department heads attend, including the school superintendent and the school business manager. It works very, very well, because I, I allow every single person in their room to, to talk directly to every, each department head during, during that, that hour and a half meeting. Happens the first Wednesday of every month. And then on top of that, I have a, a weekly operations meeting in my office that happens every Wednesday morning from nine thirty to eleven, where I talk to the key operating departments, such as police, fire, finance, public works, building department, and economic development and, and, and environment. And, and what's hap, what's important about that is that, and it's interesting, because when I hold the, the monthly department head meeting, where there's, you know, seventeen, eighteen, twenty people in the room, I purposely come late. And people say, why, why do you always come up late? I say, because it gives you guys the opportunity to communicate with each other. And it works really, really well, because at the end of the time, at the time, we actually have a, a dynamic going on where, where people wanna get to go to that meeting, because they all wanna talk to each other about what's going on in their lives. They, it's about talking about how they can cross-communicate, cross-pollinate to get their work done. But it's all about establishing a level of trust and, and, and support. I mean, they, there isn't a department head in this building that, that, in our building, that, that knows I don't try and support them in some way, some measure, measure of form. It doesn't mean that, that I don't hold them accountable. I do. I hold them really, really accountable for their, do their work. But I also support them when they need to be supported. And I think that's really where, where it comes down to, is developing that level of trust. And working with them directly. I mean, it's, and having them involved in the solution, by the way, not, not the problem. I mean, we've got plenty of problems, and there's a little unknown saying across my doors, don't bring me your problems, bring me your solutions. Because that way, they, they feel part of the solution when, when we talk to, talk about it. And, and it's, you get some great ideas. It really gets people to think before they walk through that door. Because, you know, I've got plenty of issues to deal with, but I want you to come through that door with a solution to try and, try and fix it. And I'll, and I'll try and support you any way I can to do that.
Do you, do you have an assistant?
I do. I have an assistant town administrator who works directly with me and the board. And we, we handle a lot of the, the issues together in terms of dealing with the board, specifically with board meetings and follow-up and things of that nature. So, we work very, very well together. And she's actually been in town to twenty-three years, is in the town. So, she's extremely helpful to me in that regard, because she, she knows virtually everybody and lives in town and knows, and knows a lot of people that I can deal, I have to deal with. So, it's been very helpful to me.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Thanks very much.
Sure.
Obviously, it's only fair that we allow you to ask us some questions, just make sure they're really easy, okay?
Okay.
And-
I'll try not to stop you.
And then we wanted to give you an opportunity to make a closing statement, if you'd like.
Well, first of all, let me just say, I don't have a lot of questions, because I think your, your committee did a great job of answering a lot of my questions, but I, I, I did finish with one question that I asked them, and, and I really would like to hear from you. And I think I know the answer to, for the most, that most of you'll say, but I just want you to say it to me. It's like, what kind of a person do you want for this job? I, I really would like to know that.
Well, I'll start with that one. I, I think the person that I'm looking for is someone that has a, gives deference to the fact that we're a small town and we would like to maintain a small-town atmosphere. However, understanding the, the incredibly different dynamic that resides in Route One. Also, I'm looking for someone that can understand that the Route One car does need to be developed and would be spot development. And you've had some of that in your past.
Right.
But it's, it's really maintaining the character of the town and, and being able to handle, you know, with competing pressures everywhere.
Right.
And, and still sort of with a steady hand guiding and giving, giving us guidance and taking guidance from us to say, you know, and I think you said it best when you said, what are we gonna look like ten years from now? That's what's on my mind.
Right. Yeah, thank you.
I think, you know, reemphasizing what John said in terms of working with, effectively with the board, having, helping us get to that vision, helping us uncover that, continue to uncover that vision that people in the town have. We have gone through a, a master planning process, so, you know, looking for someone who can help us, again, implement that and follow that and not just have it collect dust on a shelf somewhere. So, you know, I think everything really with the vision of bringing the town forward and bringing us to a, a next level, really.
That was both, both very good thoughts. I, one thing that you, you may wanna think about is the fact that we, we did a master plan update just a few years ago as well, but we also created a master plan implementation committee that really keeps, keeps that plan moving forward. So that when, when new things emerge or new ideas emerge, and take that document and make it a living, breathing document, so it doesn't get shelved. Because so many, so often it happens, master plans get shelved. Because they're a great document, they're, 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 they're actually the, you know, more or less the bible is how your committee really should be looking like in the next several years. And, but you have to follow it. And if, and if, and, you know, and you, and you can always tweak it, you can always change it, because if something doesn't always work out exactly the way you planned it. But it really is, is another way of addressing that issue, which I think is very important as well.
Thank you.
Bill, I'm kinda looking for someone that's gonna come in, take the problems that we have now head-on and fix it. Hold not just department heads accountable for their job, but also for the way they interact with their people. And if there's anything you can do to improve that, but if you have to make, somebody who's gonna have to make an executive decision is gonna make it. Not, you know, you, you've been empowered by the Strong Town Managers Act, you know, you know, you know what the charter is, and if, if, if something's wrong, I would want it fixed. I wouldn't want it put aside. I want it dealt with. And if something's positive, I want it brought to the board's attention, that, oh, both matters, obviously, but, you know, this employee's done an outstanding job. You know, I really think we should recognize him or her publicly and, you know, and, you know, you know, it keeps people motivated.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And, and to be able to recreate relationships with certain businesses, entities that are somewhat in a steelmate. And, and start a new beginning for this community with some of those entities and really focus hard for what we need and work with this board. And, and most importantly, all, when the board debates, to let the board debate amongst itself in a policy and not be direction, trying to direct the board with your own personal views.
Understood. One of the things that, along the point you just made, Mark, is that, you know, so often or not, we, we, we think about department heads and then we sort of, it's the people behind those doors, but we don't get a chance to get them out here in front of the public a lot of times in, in a forum where they can actually show what they've accomplished during the past year. And one of the things that we instituted in Dedham, which I find to be, people really do like this, is that, including the department heads, is, is to take a year and say, okay, show us what you've done over the past year. Demonstrate. To show us what you've done, because what happens is that you begin to get a better understanding of what they do. The public gets a better understanding of what they do, and then there's that development of respect for, you know, from, from everyone's perspective as to what, what it takes to get certain things done. It's not easy all the time. It's very, it's very challenging, very challenging work, especially in today's environment, because demands are pretty strong from all directions. So, it's, it's really good that, that people understand that it's not just people that we're paying a paycheck to. They're, they're doing these very creative, very interesting pieces of work that really, really shows how, how good, how good a department they really are. So, I appreciate your thoughts on that. That's, that's really helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with what John said, what Lorraine said, and what Mark said. And I would just like, as I said previously to the, to the other candidate, we have gone through a rough patch. And I would like to get back to a stable
Sure.
environment. And I would, I would like someone to be able to take the helm, but be inclusive, working with the board's selectmen, all the department heads, and the citizens of, of Foxborough. Because we're all in this together.
Right.
You know, taxpayers, people, workers at Town Hall, we should all be working together. I'm hoping that we'll be able to get back to that.
Right. I'll, I'll just submit to you that I, I think that rough patches are, are okay, because they sometimes launch you into bigger and better things. And, and that I wouldn't wanna just get through the rough patch, I'd wanna go to the next level. And to improve the overall perspective, the overall vision of, of the community, and how we think we can go well beyond what's, what's happened. And just put that, that issue behind us, but also bear in mind that we, that we have a lot more new things that we can do. A lot newer and better, newer and better things to do.
Thank you.
Yeah. Sure.
Yep. The, I mean, I, I've seen your work and I'm familiar with a lot of the stuff in Dedham. Put it in perspective a little bit, that you had, you had brought up, you had mentioned the HSL, the Hebrew Senior Life Project, that was a forty, four hundred and fifty million dollar project. And I'm familiar with it, 'cause it was permitted in an area where it wasn't supposed to be. It was in a rural setting.
Tough area, yeah.
Every imaginable permit, state, highway, local conservation, historic. And I think one of your selectmen lived in a big box colonial-
Very close, yeah, very close, yeah.
-abutting it.
Yeah.
But that project, the town brought it through Planning Board, Conservation, a complete rezone in, in record time.
Right.
And that's something that always intrigued me, that it was quiet, respectful. Everyone got their say, and at the end, everyone supported it. And, and I, and I know you were kinda behind a lot of that stuff. And I think that is, and, and not to take away from the other two candidates, 'cause I know their work as well, and they, they've got equal-
And it was, it was a world-class result, too. I mean, it's a world-class project. It really is.
So, so something like that, having the ability to have that foresight where a lot of times a developer would've said no, 'cause it wasn't zoned right. I, I think that was very telling. That, that is something, what I'm looking for, someone who has the vision. And it wasn't just the developer division, but that had to be explained to all the departments, and I think your department had a big role in that as well.
Thank you.
If I could ask, Paul, Jimmy, how many liquor licenses does the Legacy Place have?
Legacy Place actually has eight, but they actually added additional, one for a ninth. That was actually, we actually got special legislation for eight. And then we, we added additional one that was not included in that eight, so there's actually nine licenses that are in, in use in, in the, in that development.
In townwide?
Ah, townwide, you would ask me that question.
Oh, roughly.
Yeah, roughly, it's, there's probably about twenty-five or thirty licenses overall. Yeah, it's, there were a number, we, we actually, when we got the, the licenses for the legislation, I actually stood to take that, but there was one license that we brought to the square for Isabella's, the restaurant in the square. And, because they needed a, a, a full liquor license. Since that time, there's been an additional one that's been added for the Deli After Dark, for they have a full liquor license now. And, which really, really helped the downtown business atmosphere tremendously, believe it or not. The nighttime, it was, it's hard to find a parking space at night in the square, which is interesting. That's been a very positive effect.
Did you take the meters down?
No, not all of them, not all of them. We kept them, we took, we made the parking lot free, though. We did make the parking lot free. And, and the meter, we want the meters on the street, because we didn't want people parking there all day, taking up the business spots. So, people could, so they could turn over all day long, so people could do business in the square. And, you know, something, that's really worked out fine. It really has. I mean, there's still, some people are unhappy about the fact that they have to pay when they go in, but it was done for a reason, is to try and turn business over, so people could, could use those businesses.
Would you like to give us a closing statement?
Just, I'll be brief, 'cause I know you have to meet with your next client, next, next candidate. And by the way, three great guys, three guys, well, two other guys, other than myself, of course, but. And, and I, I will just comment to you that I was talking to a lot of my fellow managers over the weekend, and they said, it's, it's, they've looked, they, they look at these different recruitment processes throughout the state, and they said, in this particular process, that, that, that Foxborough actually attracted three very good candidates. So, so congratulations on that. This is a really interesting community, and I really, and, and something that I'd be very interested in being part of. I really, I think, I think the job would be very challenging to me, but yet at the same time, very rewarding. Professionally, I'm at a point in my life where I really would like a new challenge, and I think this would be a great place to, to land. So, I'm very interested. And I, I hope you're interested in me, and that we, we can talk further about that poss, possibility. I enjoyed my, learning a lot about your community. I'd like to learn a lot more. And we welcome the opportunity to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you very much.
Bill, if you could contact Bob and set up, make an arrangement for a visit from
Sure.
some of our board members to the community?
Yeah, and if you can give me a little more, you'll provide me some detail on that, it'll help, what, what folks you'd like to see and stuff like that. That'd be great.
I don't think you mentioned to him about the timeline you did on the first candidate, did you?
It was February fourth, is that what you're trying to mean, on February fourth?
We'll be contacting you immediately. Is your town hall, hall open on Fridays?
Uh, we are. We, we're open until four thirty.
On Fridays, wow. 'Cause every town is different.
Yeah, they're all, they are different. They're, we work- Yeah, they're all, they are different, they're, we work, well, I shouldn't, well, let me just explain, it's a little, little, little convoluted, but we actually work till seven o'clock on Wednesday nights. Uh, but we rotate, so certain, half the staff works till seven, and then next week they work, and the other staff works till four thirty. And on Friday, the people who worked at seven can go home at one, and the other people who worked till four thirty can go home at four thirty.
I like that idea.
And they ro- they rotated around, so that way the building stays open. Except in the summertime, summertime, we all, we all work till seven, we all go home at one o'clock in the summertime.
You gotta beat that Cape traffic, right?
Well, well, the problem is, is that we, people just don't show up, we don't see anybody on Friday afternoons, very few people, you know, believe it or not.
Right, right.
So it's just uh, but we we like the fact that mon- Wednesday nights, a lot of people show up because they can do business, especially the clerk window, the the um, you know, the permit windows, people can show up and do that without, because people work during the day, we we recognize that's a challenge, so.
Great, yeah, thank you very much for coming out.
Thank you very much, it's been a pleasure to meet you all, meet you all.
Thank you.
Everybody, we're gonna take about a five-minute break, and then we'll meet your third candidate. Thank you. Okay, welcome back to the board of select meeting, uh, waiting for Mr. Cutler to bring our third candidate in. Anybody on the board like to say anything while we're waiting for Bob? Public announcement.
Well, if you've been watching all night, you know the process is going along quite well, it's uh, we should be finishing up about nine thirty-ish.
Yeah, Lorraine wanted to do two-hour interviews, I told her no.
No, I didn't.
Maybe, I mean, a couple of the candidates talked about it, but to get, well, we're gonna talk about the screening committee, that they spent a ton of time, and they kept it very close to the vest and very professional.
Hi, Joe.
Nice to meet you.
Fred, how are you?
Hi, Fred.
Nice to see you.
Hi.
Good to see you again.
Okay, Fred, welcome.
Thank you.
It's been a long process for you, I imagine too, going to the screening committee and all that, and here we are, and with uh, being in this whole process, Lorraine took um took charge of it for the board, and we'll let her continue.
Great.
So she'll um, and could we give him a copy?
He's already got it.
All right, great, that way you don't have to write down, you know the questions.
Gotta fall on you, terrific.
Okay?
Welcome, Fred.
Thanks, Jane.
Okay, I'm just gonna start by explaining the interview steps that we have set up here. The interview will last for approximately sixty minutes, and I'll ask a few introductory questions, and then all members of the board will ask the following questions. There'll be twelve questions in total, and um at the end of that discussion, we'll ask if you have any questions for us, and then also give you the opportunity for a closing statement. Um, we just ask that you keep your answers focused and on point. And after um, we complete the discussion with you, we will also be uh, talking about other steps that we wanted to uh take to continue gathering information, and actually, one of them is we would like to have an opportunity for some board members to perhaps talk with members of the town administration that you formerly worked at, so if if you could contact Bob Cutler, and we can figure out how to make arrangements to make those contacts, that would be great. All right. And actually, just one more point on the timeline, our hope is to have that additional information gathered in a timely fashion so that we can deliberate on that next Tuesday, February fourth, and hopefully announce our decision that evening, and then we would begin the negotiation process at that point.
Sounds good.
All right, great, thank you. All right, uh, first question, could you please tell us about yourself, the career in municipal management? And in particular, how your experience and training qualifies you to help Foxborough meet the challenges described in our community profile? And what about this position has drawn your interest to Foxborough?
Uh, I started my career in municipal management in nineteen eighty-six, following graduate school, where I did an internship with the city of Norwalk, Connecticut, where I really had an opportunity to understand firsthand how local government could directly affect the citizens that you served. It was a great experience, uh, I I chose to continue on the path, I was awarded a presidential management fellowship and went to Washington for a year. Confirmed what I thought, that it would be, you know, a very large organization with very difficult time to feel as though you'd had much of an impact on it if you weren't, you know, a political appointee or in the senior executive service, so. I applied and and returned to New England to work in local government, I worked in the town of Vernon, Connecticut, uh, as the assistant town administrator for nine and a half years. Um, handled everything from personnel to serving town council subcommittees and doing staff research, overseeing the police and fire and public works operation, um, and serving fairly frequently as the acting administrator. My uh, my boss there had a variety of health issues during his tenure, and I spent a considerable amount of time serving an acting role there. I moved on in to Canton, Connecticut, where I had my first manager's position. I served there as chief administrative officer from nineteen ninety-six through two thousand and five. Canton is a town of about ten thousand residents, um, had the opportunity there to really develop a staff. I hired half the department heads during the course of my tenure and built a management team there. Put together the town's first capital improvement plan, um, worked very hard to try and improve the bond rating there. Uh, had the opportunity to work with WS Development, uh, which is based here in Chestnut Hill, on a project called The Shops at Farmington Valley, which, um, that company is the same one that developed Legacy Place and The Shops uh over Derby Street. So I had a chance to work with those folks and convert what was a nine-hole golf course into probably one of the first lifestyle centers of its kind in the in the country at that point, um, working with that management team. At the time, um, you know, I was in my early forties, thought I had an opportunity to to try and broaden myself professionally in different-sized community, and also the opportunity to work in another state, dealing with um different types of of laws. Connecticut has town meeting for more limited purposes than Massachusetts, and there's some similarities, but there certainly were some differences. Um, and I applied to a couple of different communities in in greater Boston and was fortunate enough to be named Wayland's first town administrator in two thousand and five. They had converted from the executive secretary form of government there, um, and the job really focused on a lot on team building, finesse. Not a lot of um, direct legal authority, if you will, over some of the things that might be comparable to a town, uh, town manager situation. I worked with a terrific board of selectmen when I was hired, uh, worked very well as a team on developing goals and objectives for the community and putting things uh in place there. Again, a capital improvement program strengthens the town's finances and financial reporting, developed a OPEB trust fund there ahead of the law that the state enacted to allow all communities to do that. The town also moved to merge functions that were formerly separate to comprise a DPW, cemetery, parks, roads, water system. And had an opportunity really to handle all different facets of the town organization at that point. Last August, a faction of the board of selectmen decided to, that they felt that there was a change in direction of the community, if you will, and thought it was appropriate rather than having me lead that change in direction or give the opportunity to do that, to buy out my contract, which, which is why I find myself here without, you know, being able to say that I'm currently employed. I will say that Foxborough attracted me for a number of reasons. I I think it's, has a great combination of small-town, uh, New England traditional community, it's a great family-oriented community, strong school system, but also has unique challenges of Route One, um, the corporate parks you have along ninety-five, and the craft organization. So I think it poses a a great management challenge to try and make sure the character of the community is maintained. Something that honors its past, but also prepares and focuses for the future. And to take advantage of some of the opportunities that having large developments, like the tax revenue and support that allows for a quality of life that you wouldn't otherwise have at the same tax level. So those are the main reasons why I certainly was very interested in this position and was before uh my contract was bought out. So I'm not here solely because I'm looking for a manager's position, but I certainly am very interested in Foxborough.
Thank you. Okay, our our second question um describes us, Foxborough as a unique community in that we are a small town with big-city complexity, intersecting highways, the stadium, small and large businesses. Can you explain why you might be uniquely qualified to be the town manager under these circumstances?
Well, a couple of areas I think that I bring some strengths to this particular situation. One is that craft organization is unique in the sense of the stadium and the size of the development, uh unlike only thirty-one other places in America with an AFL franchise. Uh, by the same token, though, it carries with it a lot of responsibility for providing mitigation of the community, to to take advantage of um, the resources that are provided through development agreements, um, infrastructure support, um, tax revenue, um, and trying to use that for the betterment of the community. It requires someone to be able to make sure that it's a win-win situation when things are negotiated between uh, any large developer and the community. In each of my communities, I've had experience with large development teams, as I mentioned WS Development and The Shops at Farmington Valley in Connecticut. Um, I worked with KGI Properties and the C- uh, Koffler Group out of Providence, who are the developers of the Wayland Town Center. Town Center project in Wayland is a um, a lifestyle center, but also contains a municipal component. Uh, one of the things we negotiated as a community with that development was a pad for a forty thousand square foot municipal building, which I, you know, Wayland has talked about for a community center, you know, more more expensive, extensive than Council on Aging facility, but uh, one that would provide a congrega- uh congregating place, a sense of downtown for Wayland, which lacks, you know, a downtown like we have here. It also had um, a proposal for anywhere from forty to eighty-eight condominium units, so it would provide opportunities for empty nesters in Wayland to stay in town, to be part of something that would feel almost like a small downtown would be um in in prior generations. So I've worked with those two major developments, I've also worked with folks from National Development on on a project that they tried to get off the ground in Wayland, but chose uh, because they felt the zoning was too difficult and the, and some of the boards they'd be working with weren't uh as receptive to the project, they they pulled out. But again, it would have been a small, um, focused retail facility, but also with some housing component to it. It was ultimately replaced with a um fifty-five unit assisted living for Alzheimer's citizens. I've worked with those types of, different types of developments. Wayland's a fairly mature suburb, so there hasn't been a lot of true subdivision development. Wayland has Conservation Cluster Bylaw, which allows for more density in housing and preservation of open space, but there haven't been any developments of more than uh, eight or ten housing units, you know, in the eight years that I've worked in Wayland.
Great, thank you. Have you read the two thousand and four Foxborough Town Manager Act? If so, how does it compare and contrast with the other acts you may have managed under?
Uh, I have read the Foxborough Town Manager Act, um, I I think it's very similar to, probably most similar to Canton, Connecticut, where I managed there, that even though they called it the chief administrative officer, um, it contained many of the traditional responsibilities and authorities that went with the town manager position. Each community, I think, varies based on its own political and cultural history, as to what level of authority they're comfortable granting to administrators versus elected boards versus town meeting. And um, each one of the places I work has had a little bit of nuance to it, and and part of your job really as a manager is to adapt to that, become comfortable in in working within the system that's provided, and trying to work collaboratively with the board of selectmen and with the citizens to utilize the system, provide the best possible services you can to the residents um, within the organizational and governance structure that's been set up for you. In Wayland, I did have the authority to appoint most department heads, very similar to Foxborough, with the exception of the elected board departments that that you have with Board of Health and Library and so forth. Couple of exceptions, the fire, uh, police, and finance director were subject to selectman confirmation. Um, ironically, um, I had more authority to dismiss department heads without board input than I did for hiring, so. And I think that was purposely done as part of uh, what I affectionately refer to as Wayland's Great Compromise, when they developed their bylaw in two thousand and four that created my position. I was one of the few town administrators that appointed town council. As opposed to the board of selectmen, which I always thought was odd when I first took the job there. And um, in the time I was there, they, as I said, they merged the DPW function, um, expanded the board of assessors to five members. A couple of the other boards that were elected, they put management control of the employees underneath the town administrator, but still had the elected the means of election for placing people on the Recreation Commission and the Board of Public Works.
So a- as a follow-up to that, how have you managed your relationships with elected boards, appointed committees, and citizens under those differences between?
Um, I I think it.
And how would that change, I guess, if, you know, coming to Foxborough compared to?
I think it's very important to create and respect the sense of ownership elected officials feel in their role as policymakers, whether they have specific managerial control or not. One of the challenges that I had first in Canton, we we took the Recreation Commission and made that, uh, their employees subject to the town administrator there. The same with DPW, was to work with the the boards, and typically uh, members would hold over for transitional purposes because they have institutional memory, they're used to managing the staff. And and I think the the most difficult things that I've had to deal with, with those officials, is helping them work together to carve out, in their minds, a meaningful role in policy setting and budget and capital improvement. As opposed to what they're used to doing, which is to having a lot of input on how the staff is managed, which work crew is assigned to to which thing. And and I think it, you have to work collaboratively with those folks to help them appreciate the role that they're taking on is as or more meaningful than worrying about which employee is is driving which mower today and mowing which ball field. Um, you're setting broad policy for the community, you're the eyes and ears of the community when you hear from citizens about programs or services that could be improved or aren't measuring up. Lots of times uh, you spend time working closely with these folks to try and um develop budgets and capital uh, projects and policies that they feel are going to improve the community, and then get used to having someone else carry them out and making them happen. And I think that's probably the greatest challenge I've had. Other boards that are directly appointed by the board of selectmen, in in Wayland, I had a lot of input with the board on appoint, on individuals who've stepped forward to serve. The board, I think, expected um, most of those committees to carry through the broad policy initiatives of the town. Sometimes uh, you know, folks butt it heads over um, what they perceived as their need to protect the town from other things, whether it be a developer or um, feeling that there should be, you know, more hearings, more vetting of a particular topic. And I spent a lot of time trying to balance those conflicting situations sometimes between the selectmen and other members of boards who maybe felt like their role wasn't as respected as it could be.
Thank you.
Uh, welcome, Fred.
Thanks, Jane.
And thank you for applying for this position of town manager for the town of Foxborough. Um, Foxborough is both a modest-sized suburban town and a home to a very large entertainment and real estate development firm, The Craft Organization. What in your background prepares you to lead the town through the complex processes of managing the short and longer-term relationship with The Craft Organization?
Well, as I said, both in Canton and Wayland, I had the opportunity to work on large lifestyle centers that are, you know, similar, but not exactly like Patriot Place, but but similar. I worked directly with the selectmen in negotiating the development agreement, our council ruled that the the negotiation of that had to be conducted at a public session. So literally, we had a work session with tables with the TV cameras on us, uh, giving and taking on the dollars amounts that would go to the town for mitigation for traffic improvements or historic preservation, affordable housing, what kind of mitigation they'd fund in for traffic improvements and and abutting residential neighborhoods. I was infinitely involved with a couple litigation, a neighboring town, I think, threw a a suit across the bow, even though we had a great relationship with Sudbury, I think more to get the attention and to support their residents who were concerned about traffic spillover from the project into the neighboring town, and worked closely with with the Sudbury Board of Selectmen to come to a win-win and negotiate funds from the developer to mitigate traffic improvements, and one of the things we did was conducted traffic studies and set aside money to do that and set milestones. If the traffic exceeded certain thresholds that we deemed as uh detrimental to a particular neighborhood, that would then trigger mitigation efforts. And we had tiered mitigation, uh, speed limit changes, stop signs, uh, speed tables, one-way traffic, traffic restrictions on weekends during peak shopping hours, those sorts of things, to try and uh, maintain the quality of life and character in neighborhoods that abutted the town center. abutted the town center. We worked with a historic district commission to try and make sure the developer used sensitive materials, brick sidewalks and so forth, within the historic district. Worked with the Conservation Commission to negotiate a large piece of the property to put in a permanent conservation restriction. Worked with the citizens group that was interested in having a playground and other amenities in the town green, which was a two-acre green space in the center of this lifestyle center that would replicate a town green, if you will. So I was directly involved dealing with our council, with the Board of Selectmen, and negotiating across the table with, first with the Congress group, Dean Struttoli's crowd, who had the financial interest in the project in the beginning, along with a local developer, and then ultimately with KGI Properties out of Providence, who is the current developer of the town center.
And as a follow-up, please describe some approaches that might be considered for managing project negotiations in continuously improving communication.
We had bi-weekly job meetings on the site involving the town staff, as well as the construction management team that KGI was supervising, to make sure that all the, again, because we had some public amenities within this project, as well as a private road that bisected the project, everything from pump stations to conservation areas, sidewalks, benches, decorative street lighting. We spent a lot of time at the job meetings, making sure that the work that was performed met town specifications and met the requirements of our development agreement. We met, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, I met frequently, with the leasing manager and the finance people at KGI Properties. This project started in two thousand and nine, just before the economy went south, and I can tell you, it was leased over two or three different times over the ebbs and flows of the economy in the last four years. Just as a function of timing, and so we spent a lot of time being available to and talking up the project with regional and local retailers, not just national retailers, to try and get a flavor that the community was looking for in the town center. They didn't want something that was strictly national retailers, and of course, KGI is looking for the national retailers, for the project backing and the financing that's necessary for a hundred-million-dollar project with longer-term leases and so forth. So there was a lot of one-on-one contact and small group meetings to make sure the project stayed on schedule and consistent with the wishes of the town.
That project that you're describing, it sounds like it's a, it's a new project. It was a new project-
Yes.
-to the area. What we're dealing with here is an established stadium that's been here for ever, it seems like, very long time.
Yes.
And how would you approach the negotiations, you know, what would your approach be in dealing with the Craft Organization if they wanted to, you know, make changes? How do, how do you think the relationship should be with, with the negotiations?
Well, I think it has to be one of mutual respect and recognition that it has to work for both parties. The Craft Organization, like any private enterprise, is there to make money, and some of the amenities that are there can certainly be beneficial to residents, but they also have some side effects that we have to be concerned about. And I think it's about having, developing a personal relationship that, where you can interact with respect with one another and understand each other. I noticed that, just in the time I've applied, that they, any other place would say a twenty-five-thousand-square-foot site plan modification couldn't be a minor modification, but when you're dealing with a stadium and the size of Patriot Place, it was something the planning board here had to consider. It's taking a look at that and making sure that there aren't side effects from it. If it truly is a relocation of football operations within the facility, that's one thing, but if it's going to generate traffic or change the character of the project, those are things you want to talk, talk to the crafts about and to take a hard look at. When they look at expanding the stadium for purposes beyond NFL football or MSL soccer and concerts and so forth, you deal with that with liquor licenses and with permits for activity at the stadium. I'm sure you're always keeping in mind, if that's one or two nights of traffic, how many more is that than eight Sundays every year? Those are sort of the things that I know you keep in mind and you expect the staff to understand and provide resources, to give you the information to make good judgments as to what's appropriate for the town.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you again, Fred, for coming. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Jim.
My question has to deal with, a lot of towns have economic, it's number five, economic corridors or nodes, and I like the fact that you're talking about specific experiences, so if we could take Wayland for a second?
Sure.
You're talking about the, it's the old Raytheon site?
Yep.
Okay, now, I think it's stop and shops built and parts of the areas have built. The pad that was left over, that the town had contracted, that did studies to do a council on aging and a-
Right.
...library.
Library.
That's still vacant, right?
Yes.
So the first part of the question is, your role in that whole project to bring that to the point where it's at? And conversely, the, if you had to do things differently on that project, Ted, make it gone a different way? Because I know there are some issues and-
Yep.
...all that stuff, and it's, not to bring up the bad part, but-
No, I'm happy to bring up the good and the bad. When I first arrived in Wayland, it was two months before the first town meeting when they had the broad zoning bylaw that passed. Like any good development, it changes, and I think one of the things that I think Wayland had a difficult time with, they want a lot of specifics in their zoning, to the point where it required zoning bylaw changes, not action by the zoning authority, to change the sizes of, you know, the size of a particular box, retail box, or signage, I mean, it's a huge issue. You know, the size, how much lighting there is involved, the color schemes and so forth. The zoning has been changed three different times to try and accommodate the marketplace. It went from a hundred condominium units with a portion to be dedicated, twenty-five percent to affordable housing, and they also was a set of apartments above the retail to create sort of a two-story Main Street look along the town green. Developer at one point, based on the marketplace, wanted to swap out and do the affordable units, all of them as affordable, the rental units as affordable, and still do some, but not be as restricted on the condominiums. They looked at age restriction versus not, and obviously affects things like wastewater and traffic. I will say that there were so many different boards with input, and the selectmen engaged when I first got there in a very collaborative process, that every single board had their own little pet peeve, and to the point where the zoning bylaw, I think from a developer's standpoint, was virtually unworkable. And then the economy collapsed. So I think they faced a number of challenges, and we spent a lot of time in the last couple of years trying to provide adequate flexibility to adapt to the market, but having to go back to town meeting for every single zone change, which is a two-thirds vote, which is very difficult to get. And assuring the community that there isn't so much flexibility, the developer can just do something that we didn't envision and didn't want as a community. So I would say that from the positive, I think that the breadth of things that were covered in the development agreement, the things that were under consideration, everything from wastewater to conservation land to historic preservation to affordable housing trust money to actual units of housing, I think it was well-covered. The, the town negotiated a three-million-dollar gift that the selectmen would have at their disposal to allocate to capital amenities, to do some things in other parts of town that wouldn't necessarily be proximate to town center, had a traffic mitigation fund for neighborhood traffic mitigation. Again, I think on the, on the negative side, I think it just wasn't flexible enough. I mean, I literally remember vividly having a conversation with the planning board member for the first few months I was there, didn't want any other box but the supermarket to be over twenty-five thousand square feet, because we don't want Barnes &amp; Noble, we'd rather have a small mom-and-pop bookstore. And not understanding that, given the marketplace, I mean, borders disappeared since we started the town center. Wellesley Bookstore was the one they looked at, if I've ever been in downtown Wellesley, and it's closed since they've opened the town center. It couldn't measure up with the margins of when you start dealing with Amazon and everything else, and it hadn't been as adaptable to the marketplace as I think it probably could have been. But that's about the community also having a very mixed feeling about the, the idea of this project. As you said, it was a former four-hundred-thousand-square-foot Raytheon office building with a sea of parking. The town had traffic in the morning and the evening at rush hour, like Sudbury still has with their Raytheon facility. The, the project that's left behind has a smaller blacktop and footprint, pervious surface than the existing project. It's generating tax revenue. Raytheon left in the late nineties, Polaroid rented it for a few years, and then it closed. And when I came to Wayland, it was an empty four-hundred-thousand-foot shell. So I, I think I'm proud of the project as it's turned out to this point, it's been adaptable, I think it could be a lot better.
Great, thank you, appreciate that.
Fred, we're gonna dive into culture and vision-
Okay.
-and then we're gonna jump to technology, but let's get into culture and vision.
Okay.
As you know, every, every decision that we make, and ultimately every decision that our town manager makes, will in the short term have an iterative contribution, and in the long term, accumulative contribution, or perhaps an irreversible impact on the direction and culture of the town. In other words, if you choose the road and go down far enough, sometimes you can't get back.
Right.
How would you synthesize the vision and culture of our town, and how would you temper the execution of decisions to be true to both, to be true to both the vision and the culture?
Well, my experience is, has been that most communities thrive best when they get input and have a consensus on the dynamic of the community and the style they want to proceed on. In a couple of towns that I've worked in, we've had things, in Wayland, they call it the State of the Town Meeting, it's a community forum, where every citizen's invited, but mostly it's, it's key members of town boards and commissions, and the selectmen kick around their goals, objectives, and priorities with those boards, and try and develop a collaborative strategy, where each one of those boards is fulfilling their role in implementing an overall strategy. One of the things about Town Center that I think folks liked was the downtown creation, the fact that it was rehabilitating a building that was off the tax rolls, but also provide enough tax revenue that it could help the town avoid overrides and maintain the quality of school system it liked. Wayland's one of fifteen AAA bond-rated communities in Massachusetts, it prides itself on its school system. It's, it's the trade, if you will, for property values, and most people that move there do so when they have young families that want to enjoy the school system, and they know that they'll sell their home for a decent value to someone else that follows them with kids who want to go through the school system. But we try and balance that, and obviously the cost of personnel and education is a tremendous cost for any local government, to try and balance that with providing some tax revenue from commercial enterprises. Wayland, I think, struggles, and maybe some of the same way that Foxborough does, with appreciating the benefits from the stadium, and I think in some ways you kind of think to yourself, well, we have to put up with some aspects of to have this. I think Wayland felt that way in some ways about the Raytheon project and some of the commercial development along Route Thirty on the Weston-Nateek border. Lots of folks said they'd love to have open space and love to have low taxes, and there aren't, they're not consistent streams of thought. So I think it's trying to find that balance and work with the community to try and come up with that. Wayland would love to have a new library, and they'd love to have a community center. The town's, the town hall building is what used to be, I guess, two Wayland High Schools ago, from nineteen sixty, renovated. So there are some needs and some capital expenses that are coming up, and I think the town spends some time trying to balance the ability to pay for those needs without operational overrides, not compromising the services, but not changing the quality of life. They like the idea of it being a semi-rural community, but Route Twenty reminds you of Route One in the morning. It's a much different community at rush hour in the morning and the evening, and even different between the summer and the rest of the year when a lot of folks go on vacation. So the State of the Town meetings we've had, I've had retreats with the Board of Selectmen help develop goals, we've had meetings with the board, with the chairs of other boards, to try and develop a consistent message to the community in terms of level of services they want, capital improvement projects and so forth. So I think it's about having that sense of, of conversation and community and bringing people together, come up with a consensus.
Thanks. Now we're gonna jump into technology, so we'll go some of, some of the soft sides, lots of balls. The, let's talk about Wayland or other towns you've been in, but what initiatives have you completed in other roles that have led to greater use of technology, creation of shared services or departmental efficiencies, in order to reduce cost? And if you could stress, you know, reduce costs or increase efficiencies, and ultimately to increase service to the citizens of your community?
Well, in each of the communities where we've done, those undertook service improvements, the savings from those things were usually redirected back in to try and improve the quality of services provided to residents. They fall into three categories for me, as you mentioned, some with technology-based, the other would be collaboration with the school department to try and consolidate operations, and the third is shared services in neighboring communities. In my last two communities, we had joint department heads in two or three different departments with the neighboring town, where one town took the lead as the employing authority, and the other community subsidized that salary and benefit structure, and they ran a joint department. The area in Wayland we did was, was recreation, where you can consolidate population of seventeen-thousand or so in Sudbury with Wayland's thirteen-thousand, and offer a range of recreation services a town of thirty-thousand could offer. We also, in Connecticut, that we shared assessing services with neighboring town, animal control, several things where we took advantage, where a department wouldn't be big enough to have either a full-time employee or, or two employees, and shared those and enhanced the service, were able to offer longer hours, more responsiveness in terms of assessors getting out in the field or in animal control and response. With the school department, we merged in Wayland, the IT function, set up a shared IT department. The school staff had technology specialists in each of the schools that supported the educational mission, and we brought in the technology leader from the Marlboro School System, which was also collaborative, arranged it with the city of Marlboro, and worked with all my departments to identify technology needs, and then leveraged that person's vision. We worked with an outside contractor to develop a technology plan, we updated the website, we started offering payment by, online for, for taxes and recreation fees and town clerk fees and so forth. We're in the midst of consolidating servers, moving all the town's records into the cloud, you know, virtualization, those sorts of things. So that was more on the technology side. We also included, upgraded our MUNIS software package and brought in some outside vendors to provide reporting, financial reporting tools, that allowed us to extract data from the MUNIS financial system that provided different levels of reporting. You know, for example, if the board wanted to track a line item across departments, you could produce reports that way, as opposed to just your spending patterns within police or fire, or whatever function you're interested in. And to track revenue as well, to try and make sure we're staying on track with the budget. So those are the three principal areas.
Is that all real-time?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, and we've, and we put up on the, on the town's website, you know, the quarterly financials, so that the residents can, can review those. Wayland had a stretch where we had, as a matter of finance committee policy, built free cash to maintain our bond rating in advance of borrowing to build a new high school in two thousand and eleven. And through some, you know, vagaries in the economy and some favorable revenue returns, the free cash number rose to about eleven percent of budget. And there was a, you know, sizable citizens group who said, it's our money, give it back, and we had a long dialogue about whether that should be through subsidizing the budget with free cash as an appropriation that was tapered off over a period of years, or a one-time, let's put four million dollars to free cash, which lowered the tax rate and everybody paid less, a thousand dollars less on average than they did the previous year, but then the tax rate whipsaw the following year because your baseline of expenses hadn't changed. So there was a fairly sizable and probably divisive argument about how to, how to treat the town surplus, and part of, out of came that, was the initiative to really improve the financial reporting, so the community had a real sense and didn't feel as though that this snuck up on them, even though it was very well-covered in the town's warrant in both narrative and, and, and table form, that there was a very specific strategy to build reserves for OPEB, for, for, for supporting the bond rating, and kind of buffering for the rainy day, if you will, so.
No, thanks, I could imagine the whipsaw.
Yeah, it was, it, it went from, the tax rate went, I think, from seventeen to nineteen and back down to sixteen and a half, I think, in three years.
Just, is there an area of government, maybe, that you haven't brought technology to that sort of screams out, that says, you know, if only we could find a way to automate this or mechanize it, that could save money? Is there an area of government that you've always wanted to try to automate?
I think the, the one to me that's the most ripe is building permits and the various entities. One of the things that I think when you have separately elected boards for health or conservation or wetlands, there's no real one-stop shopping. They, they deal with different departments, and one of the things that, when I came to Wayland, they were really focused on, well, there were three or four things, but building the high school, the town center project, because of my experience in Connecticut, but also it was customer service. Wayland had a reputation of not being particularly helpful to its residents, and the very first day when I met with the staff and sat down with them and reinforced them, the citizens are our customers, that's what we're measured by as an organization, we're here to serve those residents. And when they come in and say, I want to put a deck on my house, you don't say to them, sorry, you have wetlands on that side of your house, well, would you think about putting on this side of your house? There's ways to work with the residents to encourage them and help them solve their problems. That's what we're here for, is to help them solve whatever issue they have, or help them facilitate what they want to do. If it can't be done, that's fine, but you need to brainstorm with them and help them and suggest things to them, and not just say no, or tell them, fill out this form, and then when they get to the Conservation Commission, oh, you can go to the Board of Health, you gotta go to their meeting, and that's- you got to go to their meeting and that's three weeks from now and we'll be back a month later. People want to hear that. Time is money, especially when you're dealing with homeowners doing small projects, you know, additions to their homes or decks or something. So I think that's an area where you could create, one, some knowledge for people who only do this once or twice in their lifetimes going through that renovation of their home or something that requires a permit, to understand what's needed, what the timeframes are. If they don't have a GC that knows that, it's not going to happen. And I think that's the frustration level that I found the residents dealt with mostly in Wayland.
Everybody loves to leave their whole permit application in the box outside of the Conservation Commission and just entrust that whole thing right into that box.
Yeah.
Okay, drop it here, we'll get back to you. And you're like, I don't think so.
Well, you know, when the commission, I mean, there's citizen volunteers, they meet once a month. And if you miss the deadline, you've lost a month. And you should have gone to this board, so go there next month. People want to hear that when they're trying to put a deck on in the spring, pretty soon it's the fall and they've lost the construction season. And the contractors don't want to hear it because they're trying to keep their workload down.
Some towns, it takes more time to get the permit than it does to do the job.
To do the job, exactly. And that's what I think you shouldn't be known for. You should be a community that's known for helping its residents.
Well, thanks for your comment that citizens are customers. I like that.
Thanks.
Number eight. As our citizens expect their public officials to be available and accessible to them, how do you interact with citizens and what concrete actions have you taken in your previous jobs to improve direct services and communication to citizens?
Well, I have a pretty much an open door policy. If I'm not in a meeting with staff member or with an elected official, my secretary has always interrupted me and if citizens walk in expecting to meet with their town officials. I attend community events, you know, I'm visible and seen in the community, meet with citizens on a regular basis. I don't know if Collins Center passed on some references, but there were a couple in there from residents who were, that helped me in when they saw that I'd been bought out, volunteered and sent me letters, you know, without being solicited to recommend my services. And I think people expect and want your, to be accessible. I check email regularly, I have a cell phone, I'm, you know, I appreciate this job as a 24/7 kind of operation. So I make myself available for citizens off-hours, on-hours.
And as a follow-up, what time does your business day begin and end? Do you believe it is important to be working at Town Hall every day? And/or do you prefer to work remotely a few days a week?
My day usually begins by eight o'clock. Most days I'm there till at least five-thirty or six, sometimes longer. Wayland is like Foxborough, our town hall was open one evening a week and the same night as the board meetings. So I was routinely available over the dinner hour if citizens came in, which they often did if they're going to be involved with the board. My time out of the office generally is either scheduled vacation. As you know, I've been active with MMA, so occasionally I'm out of the office for meetings, but most of that's usually involved with hopefully furthering the cause of the community on Beacon Hill. So, yeah, I'm in the office all the time.
Okay. Okay, and the next question is mine also. Foxborough is blessed with many interested and capable citizens who are interested in serving on town committees. What is your experience working with citizen committees? And what do you feel is the town manager's proper role with citizen committees appointed by the board to address specific issues?
I see the role myself or anyone else on the staff as a resource for citizen committees. Wayland is blessed with a lot of very bright people, I'm sure Foxborough as well, that step up and serve because they have particular skills or expertise that lend themselves. If they want to be on the town's building committee, they're usually an engineer, an attorney in construction, you know, wetland scientist or something like that. They can provide real, real-time expertise and experience that would benefit everyone. And I think my role is to try to facilitate that involvement and make sure it works towards the better of the project and is in keeping with the selectmen's goals and objectives for the town. Provide a resource. And I think you obviously deal with all different personalities. Some people are more hands-on and want to do some of the legwork themselves, but we certainly want to provide that resource because they're volunteers. They're not getting paid for it. They have their own jobs, their lives, their families. And they're just trying to do their part to give back to their town and lend their expertise. So the extent that the staff can provide the legwork and the resources to do that, I think that's what we're here for. But again, clearly if folks want to be more directly engaged, it's, I guess it's my role to make sure that it's channeled in the appropriate way.
And as a follow-up, what types of projects do you think lend themselves to citizen participation through ad-hoc committees? And how important is citizen petition through ad-hoc committees?
I think public building projects in particular lend themselves that for two reasons. As I said, you usually have a lot of people with expertise in the community that are willing to lend their, themselves to the project. It also, I think, helps build community buy-in. If you have folks on the committee that are vested in the project and they see value for their dollar, their tax dollar being spent, that it's being spent wisely, that you're taking advantage of every opportunity to save money and avoid change orders. I mean, I've always measured a project by the percentage minimum of change orders. That means it's been designed well, it's functional, and you're not paying twice for the resources when you go back on a change order. And I think that's where citizen committees can be particularly helpful. In other areas, I know in Wayland, we use them on technology issues because before we merged with the school department, we only had one full-time technology person and they were much more of a reactionary maintenance mode kind of person as opposed to a visionary on what technology could do for our organization. I think in financial services, Wayland was blessed with almost a who's who of Boston Finance that's sit on the finance committee. So I never, ever had to spend hours explaining over and again the value of free cash and fund balance and why we should fund OPEB. It was clearly understood this is important and our job is to help educate the residents why it's important to save for this as opposed to what they can directly see as a tangible thing. So I think there's plenty of opportunities for citizens to step forward. I think I saw some of that with the search committee. You have some really good people on there.
Thank you.
Like most municipalities, money is tight in Foxborough. What is your experience, what does your experience provide evidence that, evidence that you can play a leadership role in financial planning process, process that town believes is essential to maintain and service, deliver delivery capability?
Well, when the recession hit, Wayland set up an ad-hoc committee consisting of representatives from the finance committee, school committee, selectmen, staff. And we brainstormed and had public meetings and brainstormed for ideas for both revenue generation and cost containment. Did the legwork, researched those, and put together about a million dollars' worth of combined revenue enhancements and cost avoidance. During the, probably the deepest part of the recession, we were able to get through without laying off employees. We reduced headcount through attrition, reorganization departments. And those are all initiatives that, you know, I get the credit for as the leader of the management team, but they came from the part of the team. And one of the things that I stress to my department heads, you don't have to just be competent in your field of expertise, but you need to lend something to the overall and contribute to the management of the community in providing ideas. One of the management groups that I belong to, some of my colleagues, we brainstorm and meet every couple of months. One of my colleagues had the, I guess the luxury, had three or four department heads all retiring in the same year. And we all kicked around, and they're all disparate, social services, police, finance. I mean, a paramilitary organization, human resource function, and a financial function. Besides finding people with skills in that area, typically they tend to have particular personality traits that lend themselves in different ways to strengthening the overall management team. And we talked about how you can try to blend those strengths and get the best advice from your staff, not just related on police or human resource function or on finances, but generally their approach to problem solving and thinking out of the box. So I was fortunate to have a pretty good group of people working with us on that as well as some talented people on those boards that came up with some good ideas.
A municipality is a direct service organization. Residents make judgments about their town based on the services they receive. After learning about Foxborough through your research, what do you see are the future needs of Foxborough that should be addressed?
Well, I think that demographics play a large part in that. And as all of us, our baby boomers are approaching the age of retirement, I think the definition of senior service example has gone from the stereotypic widow playing pinnacle to dealing with people with aging parents who are living longer, healthcare issues, financial issues, perhaps having kids that are trying to get their first job and get out of the house. So I think some of the types of recreational and evocational services that people might want or enjoy are changing all the time. Obviously, people will look for a strong school system, I think, in most of the communities in this area. I think they expect high-quality and efficient public work services. And communication, when things change, they want to hear about it. In this day of instant communication, you don't wait for the phone call for schools canceled to get up or you get a text message from the school department or a reverse 911. And I think the community can play a real role in that, in providing that. And I think we also provide opportunities to build a sense of community among groups of people that are so busy that, you know, are connected and only in tangential ways, whether it be through youth sports or schools or community groups. Foxborough is a great downtown. It has commercial there as well as out on Route 1. I mean, I saw firsthand the type of community you have just from what you've been through with Sam Burns. And it seems like a very caring, nurturing place that takes care of one another. And that's one of the things that I think attracted me to Foxborough, that it's a community that does treat neighbors like neighbors. And I think part of our job is to provide the resources to make people feel as though their community can be that way.
Thank you.
I was going to have a comment, but I didn't because I thought it was, I was just trying to, it was going to be funny, but I'll lay off. There have been attempts in the past to build trust in the effort to improve department performance and create a better sense of team for municipal employees. Results in the efforts have been suboptimal. How would you suggest repairing employee management relationships and rebuilding trust?
Well, I think that the challenge in municipal government is that you're doing a lot of silos. Different, people think in the departmental way as opposed to interdepartmental. And to the extent that you have the opportunity to see connections between departments, I think allows you to try and bridge that gap. One of the things we tried to do, and the physical layout of the building made it hard. I mentioned the ladies department, so Wayland, they're in four or five offices side by side, all the different doors. They aren't connected. And we talked about taking down some walls between them, you know, sharing paraprofessional support to try and maximize the, because the demands have been flowed between building and health and planning. When we merged the Public Works function, that was a real opportunity where we cross-trained employees. It saved some money, but it also took people that had worked the same cycle. Public Works is one of those calendar year cyclical things that I imagine over time probably isn't all that exciting when you plow the roads, put the sand down, sweep up the sand, trim a few trees, wait for just snow again, prepare the potholes. Guys got to be able to chance to cross-train in the water department and were available to do water overtime on the weekends. Wayland has built a water treatment plant when I was there as well as having an aging infrastructure, but only had eight employees. And only half of them liked to do the overtime. The other ones were on the, you know, the other guys would take it for them, but they should be doing their share of the overtime. But we opened it up to some of the Public Works guys. Same with the cemetery operations, the guys with the backhoe experience had an opportunity now to move from highway on the weekends and, you know, be part of the cemetery operation. So I think it's about creating opportunities and training. I think it's valuing suggestions. When you ask your employees for comments, don't ignore them. Work with them on them. And also create a sense of camaraderie within the organization, some social events, some activities. When I was in Canton, you know, we had an employee picnic every summer. The first, in our community, we closed Town Hall Friday afternoons just during the summer and went the longer hours during the week. And the first Friday that we closed was the day before they opened the town pool and all that stuff. So we had a barbecue for the employees. Little things like that, I think, go a long way to help building morale. It's very difficult in this environment with difficult economy, with taxpayer dollars, to use financial incentives to reward folks. You know, I've worked in communities where we've had merit pay plans that involved goal setting, but it's only a portion of the compensation. That there was sort of a baseline that was given the employees and then there was a pool that was able to be allocated. But it was usually done on a, you know, one-time cash basis as opposed to building into the base of the employees. So it was really more project-specific as opposed to a cash stipend for just overall generally good performance from the prior year. But it was a way to differentiate between folks who just show up and put in their time and the ones who are there serving the public. And I think our job is to try through a combination of incentives and management style as well as discipline if necessary to make sure that everybody aspires to being the type of employee that's there and recognized there to serve their customer.
Thank you.
Thank you for all of your answers. But, you know, we've asked many questions, so now we'd like, if you have any questions for us, just, you know, please don't try to stump us.
No, I don't have any specific questions. Like I said, I've done some research, I've talked to different folks in the community. And like I said, I think it's a wonderful place and I'm excited about the opportunity, if I'm given it, to work with you and work together to lead the community. In terms of providing any additional information, I'm available in the next couple of days if folks want to meet directly. As part of the reference package, I did give three department heads, two selectmen who are currently serving on the board in Wayland, who were chairman at different points during my time there. I know Dick spoke with someone else who's off the board now, but was chair two years that I was, and was on the board that hired me. Happy to provide references in any, any type of, I guess, category or walk of life in Wayland, if you'd like. Certainly any in Connecticut as well, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fred.
Appreciate it.
Oh, also, could you get in touch with Bob?
I will give him a call, okay.
Thank you.
Well, I guess that wraps it up. Any final words, Lorraine?
I just want to.
Fred, thanks a lot. Thank you very much.
It's very nice to meet you. I just want to thank everybody on the board from the very beginning. You know, this has been a really great team approach. Everybody provided input at every step of the way. And I really appreciate all of the time and effort that everyone on the board put into this. And also especially want to commend the screening committee. I believe, again, they put a tremendous amount of time and effort into this process and really worked hard to bring us forward three very qualified candidates. I'm thrilled at how the interviews went tonight. And, you know, I think we have some good information to digest and think about and look forward to hearing back reports from, you know, everybody that each of us speaks to. In terms of further organizing, what we're going to do for that piece of it, do you want to talk a little bit about each of us? I know Jimmy wanted to take a certain approach, you know, meeting onsite. Do we want to talk further about contacting individual department heads or?
Well, I will contact the chairman of each town and have a discussion with them. I don't have the frequent flyer miles or driver miles under my feet that Jim does every day, so it'll probably most likely be a phone conversation except for, I mean, as far as Wayland goes, it's an hour ride, you know?
Well, I'm down in Rhode Island, so I'm the same as you. To get up to Massachusetts is difficult in the middle of the day. But, I mean, I could take public safety, police and fire.
You taking both police and fire?
Unless you want one.
Well, I'll take one.
Would you rather have fire or police?
All right, I'll take police, you take fire.
Okay, I'll take fire.
All right.
Jim?
Yeah, so I'll reach out to all three and I'll have a coffee with them, I'll go to their office. Once I find the time, I'll email the board and I'm more than happy to take one. I think it probably just one of you is with me.
See who's available.
Yeah, just catch Ken if you're available, we'll go together. If not, I'll bring it back and we'll discuss it. You know, I'm not looking to get into a lot of detail, just if there's anything that, I think, just from my sense of.
No, that's a good idea. It's all about fit.
I can contact finance and planning.
Sure, if that's how you feel. Diane, you got all that? No, I think very qualified, outstanding job bringing the candidates.
Yeah, it's going to be.
It's going to be a tough decision. I can't see this being an easy one. It isn't going to be for me, so, I mean, very respectful gentleman and I enjoyed the process, so.
And just also to put it in a little perspective, I mean, there was a lot of candidates that we had for the review committee. Okay, I think we chose, what was the final number, seven?
Seven.
Seven. And they kept it very close to the vest. They didn't, you know, because when people give their applications, they're obviously working at different places. So it was done very professionally. The one discussion I had was somebody today and I was asking for specifics, but I thought it was a little odd that, you know, we did this broad search for business-type people and all around the country and we get Norfolk, Dedham, and Wayland. And, you know, how big can that search be? So my question was, is this the best three out of a weak pool? Or, you know, is it the best three out of a strong pool? And he basically said the candidates, you know, there was thirty-something of them. Few in the top, you know, it was a no-brainer. But it was a tough decision to get down to this three. And it was, it was a good pool of candidates, so I. So I think, you know, any of the three here, from the discussion, brief discussion I had, not one very strong over the other, but these are three solid candidates that we have a good sense of picking, so.
Anything else? Motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Night.